Always the awkward part, I gotta put my eyes on when we get ready to read this. Or I could just get one of these guys come do it. All right. Those that are in the room, we'll just do a, we're gonna do a quick presentation, a proclamation for our Parks and Rec. We're coming up on July, right here towards the end of the week, and July is Parks and Recreation Month. So we certainly want to, to recognize not only the department and the individuals within the department, but also, most people in Pearland may not really understand what all you guys did in the last year. Obviously, as we went into the pandemic with COVID, and these guys went into action, and they really created a lot of online activities, as well as other things to keep, especially our kiddos, who were home from school, busy. And, and a lot of parents, thank you for that. But in addition to that, really pushed hard to get a lot of our trails and our open space open, so people could still get outside. And so while a lot of people went into lockdown mode, our Parks and Rec team really stepped up and did a tremendous effort getting a lot of places open and alternatives for people outside of their homes, and outside of their businesses, obviously, schools were closed and those types of things. And so, most people in town don't recognize that, and I wanna make sure that I, I recognize that tonight, for those that are not only here locally, but are watching online. And of course, this Sunday, I'll get you to talk about that here in just a minute. All right. All right, let me read this. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, City of Pearland, whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including City of Pearland, Texas, and Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our Parks and Recreation areas are vital, important, vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economy and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation, Pearland Parks and Recreation is committed to building a healthy, connected, and vibrant community that enriches lives through exceptional experiences, and whereas Parks and Natural Recreation areas improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, Parks and, Pearland Parks and, Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for community to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me, as Mayor of City of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2021 as Parks and Recreation's Month, and just ask that, that each one of us recognizes that. Get out and about this month, it's a great time to do, do so. Might be a little wet today, but that's okay. But presenting this to Ms. Carrie Capers, who is our Parks and Rec Director. And would like for Carrie to say a few words about your department and what these types of things mean to you, but also, what's happening this weekend?
Absolutely, thank you so much. It is such an honor to be celebrating Parks and Recreation Month, because it has been a long year, year and a half, and the work that our Parks and Recreation team here in Pearland has done for the community is outstanding. When, you know, people can no longer come to us, we made sure that we could get to them, and whether it was dropping off Boredom Buster bag kits at people's doorsteps, or Senior Smiles where we were out, you know, meeting people socially distanced through the windows on their porches to make sure that they knew that we were still there for them. And our team did that, and they did it for the community, and that is very exciting. And then to be able to move into Parks and Rec Month this July, the theme, you know, is telling our story. I think every single one of our parks in Pearland has so many stories that live within that park. Just about everybody in the community that has ever visited one of our parks, one of our events, or one of our programs, has that memory that will last with the, will stay with them forever. And so we're very excited to be celebrating that. I have Monica Montoya, our Recreation Superintendent, and also Sadani Douglas, our Recreation Program Manager. And then we also, joining us online tonight, have the entire rest of our department. And I can say that they're equally excited. We're gonna kick things off, we do have a very exciting event planned for this weekend. We're excited to get people back out into the parks for events in person. This Sunday, we're gonna be celebrating July 4th with the City Celebration of Freedom. That event will kick off at 6:30 PM at Independence Park. You can find more information on our website about the event, but we'll have Breakfast with Tiffany's, providing wonderful entertainment on the HEB Entertainment Stage. We're going to have a fireworks display, as well as food vendors, craft vendors, and just a lot of fun. So, we invite every one of you to come out and join us, check out our website for more information. And Monica, if you would, just share a little bit more about the entire month of July. We have an incredible programming calendar built out, and activities for everybody.
Certainly, thank you, Carrie. So Sadani and I have been working with our programming staff, Aaron Tarr, Parks and Rec Team, and developing a very robust calendar for the community this month of July. We always have really cool things going on in Parks and Rec, but this month especially, we're bringing some of those things out and putting them on a special show. So we have on July 24th, our Live with Educati. We just released an Educati episode from Our Nature Center, and that is a fan favorite. So the community's gonna be out, be able to come out and see that live at Independence Park. And the first 75 people who come to us are gonna got a really cool adventure kit. There's also adventure books and giveaways that are gonna be spread out throughout the month. We're gonna have pop-up snow cone things at the splash pads. We're gonna have some of our other sports, like bocce ball and disc golf, and some of those things that you don't see all the time. So go to pearlandparks.com and look at the full calendar that's there. It gives you a week-by-week breakdown, and times, dates, and locations of where to come join us.
Thank you so much, again.
All right, thank you. So avail yourselves of the many parks that we have here in town, as well as the activities. Come join us on Sunday, and let's, let's just have a great time celebrating our freedom, celebrating our country, and let's do our best to get back to normal. Thank you, folks. And we will start our meeting promptly at 6:30 here in just a few minutes. All right, we'll bring to order this regular City Council meeting for June the 28th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. First order here is an invocation in our pledges, I'll lead us in a prayer. Member Carbone, would you lead our pledges tonight? All right, all rise. Heavenly Father, we come and want to just ask, or thank you for the opportunity to be here, here in, in City Hall, free and, and able to assemble, deliberate the business of this great city, and all of that, as a result of the freedoms that we enjoy. And I pray, Father, that we take the time this week and do celebrate our freedom in this country. At the same time, Father, I just continue to ask for search and rescue there in Miami to uncover those who are still missing. And Father, we, our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers go out to everyone involved there in that building collapse, and we just ask that more and more people are found alive and are rescued from that, from that tragic event. So we ask that you be there for those families, and be there for those that are injured and hurt in the midst. Father, we always ask for you to continue to watch care over all of our first responders here, not only in Pearland, but across our great nation, and certainly, Father, our military, both home and abound, which will just lift them up, protect them, and guide them in the days and months ahead, in Jesus' name we pray. If y'all draw me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its own, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, of allegiance to the Texas state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Moving, moving forward in our agenda, we'll do a roll call or All right, moving, moving forward in our agenda, we'll do a roll call or certification of our quorum. We do have one member, Member Perez, that will not be here tonight. He's both absent from the chamber as well as not able to join us online. We have Member Hernandez that just connected online. He is traveling, but is joining us virtually. And then Members Orlando, Carbone, Kamkar, Little, and Owens are all present in the chambers. So we do have a quorum, and we can move forward in our agenda. In our agenda, we have citizens' comments, and we have quite a few, not only that are wanting to speak in general terms, but we have several that have signed up for various agenda items. And so those that have signed up for certain agenda items, I will call your name when we get to that specific agenda item. That way, your comments can be more tied to those comments. And in fact, some of those who have signed up have signed up for some of our public hearings. And naturally, our public hearings are open for comment during the public hearing portion of it. So you may be able to make your comments then. And then when we actually have the new business item for the, that public hearing, you may not, you could either speak at one, or you could reserve the other. So as I call your name, and these are for people who have either signed up virtually, online, earlier today, there was a deadline, or they filled out Speaker's request form getting here. Limit your comments to three minutes, and remember name and address for the record. First up was a Ms. Lisa Taylor. She wanted to be virtual, and Joe, I'm not sure if she's online.
I do not see Lisa Taylor online.
Okay, we may come back to her if she does get online before these speakers are finished. Just let me know.
I have one call-in user. I'm just going to identify them real quick to make sure they're not. Call-in user 832-829, can you identify yourself?
Yes, this is Brian Altis with Multivista.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jason Perry. I don't see him in the chambers, and he was saying he wanted to be live and in the chamber. So I don't see him. Next up, we have Mr. Patton Ritter, right over here. Yeah. Yeah, for those who haven't been here in a while, our podium is in the back. Name and address for the record in three minutes. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Patton Ritter, and I live at 305 South Walker Street in Angleton, so not a Pearland resident. But I was born up here. Real quick, I will not take up the full three minutes. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am running to be your next judge for County Court of Law Number Two. Judge Mark Holder is retiring at the end of his term, and so I'm getting out there, trying to get my name out, and meet with everybody, and try to let them know why I want to run, and what I can do for Bexory County. So I know y'all have a packed agenda. I will keep it short. My Facebook page is Patton for Judge, or PattonRitterForJudge.com. And I would appreciate y'all checking it out and looking at it. And if you have any questions, please let me know. I'd appreciate it. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that, Patton. Well, moving forward, we have Mr. Gary Hosmer. There he is.
Gary Hosmer, 4026 Ravenwood Court, Pearland, Texas. I want to speak on several issues, so I may take a little more than three minutes. I hope you'll give me the time. I want to speak about the Electoral College that Councilman Luke Orlando, he said the president was elected by popular vote. The president is not elected by popular vote. The president is elected by electoral college. And then he said the Republican Party needs to change. Change to what? The Democratic Party, the one that kills babies? The one that has, when the baby is born, he has, he can also be killed in nine months. He can be killed in New York and Virginia. They talked about doing that. And Joe Biden, our President of the United States, who, do you know who Charles Dunn is? Maybe you don't. But Charles Dunn was the one, the tractor truck driver that Jill, President Biden's first wife, pulled out in front of. He hit her car. He was the first one on the scene to that car to rescue the two boys. She later died, the baby died. But he was the first one to that car and rescued them, got those two boys out of the car. You know what Joe Biden said about that man? He drank his lunch. He said that until 2007. Charles Dunn drank his lunch. And that's the kind of president we have now. He wants to kill babies. And Joe, our, Luke Orlando says the Republican Party should change. I don't know, change to what? Killing babies? Liars? And then prohibition. You folks here on this city council want more liquor in this city. You know what prohibition was about? We had a fine presentation about prohibition. It was very good. But there's another side to that prohibition statement. Those ladies wanted their husbands to come home at night. They wanted them to take care of the family. They wanted them to be there to provide for the family. Those husbands were going to the bars, spending their money, and there was no money to raise the family, no money to pay the rent, no money to pay for the doctor bills, no money to pay for schools, no money to pay for clothes. Those women wanted their husbands home. They didn't want them hanging out in the bars. But you folks here seem to think we need more alcohol in this city. We don't. And now you want to provide free water in case there's a hurricane or something. Where's that money coming from? These people here in this county, county, there's all sorts of people. There's churches, there's Red Cross. We don't need to be providing free water to people that can get it, and they don't want to get it. And then there was a thorough presentation by the lady from the Water Department, and she gave a very good presentation. Nobody understood what she said. And then the Citizen Committee wanted to give his presentation, but he wasn't able to give his presentation because city council members didn't have it. That's not his fault. But he was accused of a conspiracy theory by one of the council members here. That's ridiculous. And now you want to have a tax district that has water district, and you say you don't want to have both votes on the calendar at the same time because they'll get voted down because of a tax crease. They should get voted down because we don't need another water district. You don't need another tax entity, or the City Water Drainage Committee, and another tax entity to reconcile with that.
Does that complete your, you're at your three minutes, Mr. Hosmer?
Well, you didn't give me my three minutes. And one other thing I like to say is you folks represent the people in Pearland, not the other way around. So you use this three minutes so people can't speak to the council members. We are the citizens of Pearland, and you represent us. And sometimes y'all forget that.
Thank you, Mr. Hosmer. Moving forward in our agenda, we're going to open public hearing number one. Mr. Orlando, would you read the purpose of this public hearing into the record?
Sure. As we wait for that to pull up on the screen, I'll take a moment of personal privilege to inform you, Mr. Mayor, that I'm a practicing Catholic and emphatically pro-life. But in terms of the public hearing, are we going to read the entire description?
Just not the legal descrip, just?
Right, just the public hearing. So, public hearing number one, a request by Robert Quintana, applicant on behalf of Melissa, Pearland LP, owner for approval of an amendment to the land use regulations of the Province Village Plan Development District. Is that sufficient?
That's sufficient. Yeah, general location, 2701 Pearland Parkway, Pearland, Texas. So with that, we will turn to a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let me introduce Mohammed Barima. He will provide the staff report for this agenda, and then I'll be available to answer any questions afterwards.
Evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This request is for approval of amendments to the allowable uses within the Province Village Plan Development to permit gym and slash health club used by right within the General Business District of the PD on approximately 1.7 acres of land located at the southeast corner of Pearland Parkway and Province Village Drive at 2701 Pearland Parkway. This is the zoning map showing the property being located at the western edge of this PD. Again, this PD was approved in 2005, which include several zoning districts, residential as well as GB and OP. And this PD amendment only apply to the GB zoning district, again, as I said, it's highlighted on the western edge of this PD. The purpose of this amendment is to accommodate a boutique fitness studio, offering spin classes with a maximum floor area of 2,500 square feet. The proposed use is classified as gym, and is typically permitted within the GB zoning elsewhere in the city. Again, if this use is approved, any other gym use would be allowed to, to be permitted in this zone, in this GB district, this particular location. These are photos taken from several viewpoints of the existing building. The building is a 14,000 square feet multi-tenant building that was built in 2014 with underlying zoning as GB. It has some restricted land uses. Again, the gym is one of them, and the intent is really just to make this allowable by right here in this building. The subject property is designated on the future land use as retail offices and services, and this use would be consistent with that. The Planning and Zoning Commission action, so the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing for this request on June 7. And after the hearing and the discussion, the commission voted to recommend approval of the request by vote of six to zero. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Moving forward, is, if the applicant is present to give a presentation, that would be great. Just go to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Council members, I'm John Frazier. I live at 1266 Fountain View Drive in Houston, Texas. I'm here on behalf of Melissa Pearland LP, Michael, and Tracy Stelmack, the owners of Cycle Bar here regionally. We are seeking to amend the Province Village PD, as you just heard, and have worked closely with staff in structuring this language to be limited in scope, both to indoor fitness only and to 2,500 square feet or less. We feel that Cycle Bar is a best-in-class brand that aligns with the quality of the neighborhood and the city of Pearland overall. We appreciate your time and consideration. I'll hand it over to Michael for a second, but we're here to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Michael Stelmack, 2002, Peony's Court, Pearland, Texas, 77581. For those of you that weren't here June 7, I'd just like to give a quick summary of what Cycle Bar is. It is an indoor cycling studio, so everything will be done inside. It's a very beautifully branded business. So it's beautiful inside and out. I think it represents the city of Pearland very well. And my wife and I are very excited to bring this to Pearland. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. So that completes the applicant report. When we get to questions and answer questions from the council, they may have you ask those as well. So then we will open this up for the actual public. We'll make three requests for those who want to speak, both either in favor or against this request. So if you feel inclined, you can go to the podium, and again, give your name and address for the record. So anyone speaking in favor or opposed to this request? Second call, anyone speaking in favor or opposed to this request? And third and final time, seeing no one moving in that direction, but anyone speaking in favor or opposed to this request? Seeing none, we'll then move to council or questions, and staff questions, if anyone has anything.
Sir, what was your name again, sir?
Michael.
Michael, is this your first Cycle Bar business, or have you run any others?
No, it is my first. It's actually my first business to ever start up.
Well, I just, first of all, I want to say I'm excited that a Pearland resident wants to invest in Pearland, so very excited for you. That's great. I usually tend to agree with our P&amp;Z, where we have several of those members here today. I'm glad that they see the value in this, and so I wish you the best of luck, and we'll be favoring it.
Thank you. Member Owens, would you?
No, we didn't have anybody to speak against this from the public side. It was posted, so I don't have any problem with it.
Any other council members? Member Hernandez?
This is Member Hernandez. I just wanted to say that this business has already started investing in the community, so I'm excited to see them move forward and do some more good in the community. So I just wanted to give a big thumbs up to them tonight. Thank you.
And just from staff's perspective, what happened here when this PUD, UDC, was put together 16 years ago, you know, it just had gym as one big classification. So they were looking more at a large gym going on one of these corners versus a small boutique. Might be favorable to, in our UDC and in our matrix, maybe delineate between, you know, a large, you know, like LA Fitness versus, you know, what would go in-line retail and that type of thing. Might, might make this a little bit smoother in the future if we, we had something like that. So, but certainly welcome this business into our town. Does that complete council's questions, comments? Okay. So with that, we will move to adjourning this public hearing. And then we'll turn around and do new business item number one. So Member Carbone, would you put that on the table for consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance 2000M-210. So moved.
Standing.
We have motion and a second. We've heard staff reports. I think we can skip that. We do have citizens that did sign up to speak for this. We have Mr. Todd Riddle. Okay. And then Michael, if you have any other comments, you also signed up to speak for this agenda item?
Yes, sir, I'm fine.
Okay. And then Mr. John Frazier. Got it? So just making sure I'm checking those boxes. So, all right. So with that, I don't think that, we just had questions and comments from council, so Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2000M-210.
Awesome. That completes that new business item. So then we will move to public hearing number two. Member Hernandez, would you, you have your agenda with you?
It's on the screen. I can read it, Mayor.
There you go. Thank you. Just, yeah, read into the record the reason for the public hearing there.
Yes, sir. Next, we have the public hearing, a request by Raga Rulangi, applicant on behalf of Kabani Group LLC for approval of conditional use permit for auto wash, self-service, and auto repair within the Commercial District of the Shadow Creek Plan Development, to accommodate development, propose full-service car wash and lube center on 1.36 acres of land.
All right, thank you. So moving forward, we'll go to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, Mohammed, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. So this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for self-service auto wash and auto repair minor uses within the Commercial District of the Shadow Creek Plan Development, located near the southeast corner of Shadow Creek Parkway and Kingsley Drive at 12,700, 12,700 Shadow Creek Parkway. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this request. This is the location map showing the subject location with, highlighted with the yellow there. The property is currently undeveloped, surrounded by the commercial uses and commercial zoning of the Shadow Creek Plan Development from four sites. There's an existing multifamily development on the south side of this subject tract. The site plan shows the proposed development of the site incorporating these two uses, the auto repair and the self-service auto wash with associated parking, general circulation within the site. The building elevations reflect the architectural design. It's the Nexus light mark, reflects the architectural style and the proposed building materials, featuring brick veneer on four sides. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on, these are views of the subject site taken from multiple points from Shadow Creek, looking also back towards the property across the street from it, on the other side of Shadow Creek. Creek. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and discussion on this request at their regular meeting on June 7, and after that hearing and discussion, the commission recommended a few stipulations to be included as conditions of approval of this request. And these conditions include minimum 30-foot landscape buffer along Shadow Creek to be provided, and accommodated landscaping material, including trees and street screening hedges. Second condition is the proposed use shall be developed in substantial conformance with the materials depicted in the elevations that we just saw. The third condition is a 15-foot landscape buffer along the rear containing sheer trees, and that's to provide additional sound buffering from the multifamily located in the back. The fourth condition is the site shall be developed in accordance with exterior lighting standard of the Unified Development Code. Again, the code was adopted in the UDC, but generally speaking, the Shadow Creek has been developed prior to the UDC, and so we wanted to make sure that the lighting standard of the UDC would apply to this property. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. And is the applicant present or applicant presentation? Thank you.
Mayor and Councilman, thank you all for giving this opportunity. My name is Prasad Maragani, 113815 Tarragon Penn Drive, Richmond, Texas. I'm the engineer on the project, and I also have the owner, Matt. We are here to answer any of your questions in case the council or any of the members have. The presentation, as you've seen, is pretty much straightforward. We did have some stipulations by the P&amp;Z, and we are willing to make those changes. Since this was just a conceptual, that's our conceptual layout. Thank you.
Wonderful. So we'll move forward in our agenda. Those wishing to speak either in favor or oppose this particular request, go to the Second request, any in the audience looking to speak in favor or against this proposed request? And then, third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor, Mr. Hosmer?
Yes, I'm in favor of this. This is what we need in Pearland. We don't need more alcohol and people sitting around bars and drinking. You go down here and wash your cars, work on them. Take your families down there to wash your cars. This is a great idea. This is what we need in Pearland, not more bars and people sitting around bars getting drunk, driving home drunk, and getting arrested by the police. And Luke Orlando said, "Well, they're gonna drive drunk. They might as well drive drunk in Pearland." They don't obey the laws. These people are gonna obey the laws. This is the kind of thing you need in Pearland, right here.
Mr. City Attorney, for clarification, what is the ability of the council to respond to off-topic questions and comments by members of the audience?
Well, now that we're actually on an agenda item, you can respond to the comments that were made during this portion of the meeting.
Great. Yeah, I would love to. This has nothing to do with that, and I've only supported allowing the people of Pearland to make a decision on whether, what type of entertainment and economic options they would like to have. Currently, the voters of 1891 are the ones who have decided that. I believe that the voters of 2021 should be able to deliver a decision emphatically, and whether that's for or against being able to be like Sugar Land, Friendswood, The Woodlands, West University Memorial, or any of the other, every single one of the other major cities in the Houston area that do permit things like, so much as a papado from opening up here that are not able to. Yes, I do emphatically and strongly support the ability of the people of Pearland to vote on that decision, and I think that's simply common sense, simply democracy. So, I want the people of Pearland to vote, and I also will be supporting this car wash as well, especially since there seems to be, if they're willing to make the changes that were suggested by the planning and zoning. So, appreciate the work that was done here, and appreciate the on-topic comments. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're into, obviously, council input and discussion, any questions of staff as well as the applicant? Seeing none, moving forward, oh, Mr. Little?
No, I appreciate the applicant making the changes recommended by zoning, planning and zoning, and wish you luck.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
So, I thank you for, first of all, coming over here, and I want to thank the P&amp;Z once again for taking their job seriously and providing insightful comments, and thank you for being willing to do those for the benefit of the community. And I apologize for you being brought into items that don't concern this item. You're showing a lot of grace and humility, and I really appreciate your patience.
Thank you, sir.
Second to that, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments from council?
This is Member Hernandez.
Ah, there we go.
So I will more than likely, more than likely, I will be a no on this, but simply because I've expressed my carve-out for car washes in the past, and I'm just gonna stick with that. I think that we have enough, and I don't know if you really bring the right kind of value that we're looking for, especially on our high visibility in, you know, clean corridors like Shadow Creek Parkway. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. But it looks like it's gonna pass, so I wish them luck anyway.
Sounds good. Moving forward in our agenda, that concludes. We will end this public hearing, and we will move to new business item number two. Mr. Kamkar, would you place that on the table for consideration?
Yes, Mayor. For consideration and possible action, resolution R2021-CUP21-00016, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report. We've also had questions and comments from our council. We'll move to Madam Secretary calling for the vote on it.
Just wanted to get clarification if the council wanted to include those conditions, because I don't believe those conditions are included in the item presented as it was presented this evening.
Good question. So that would take an amendment?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Is it in the resolution?
It's not, excuse me, it's not in the resolution as presented, is that correct?
The instruction was to not include those items and to bring a clean draft.
Right, thank you.
Right. So if you would like it to be amended to include the recommendations that were read by Mohammed, the recommendations by the Planning and Zoning Commission as read by Mohammed, that would need to be included in a motion to amend.
I'll make a motion to amend, agenda item number two, to include the items recommended by Planning and Zoning and read into the record.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to amend, to add these recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we're gonna vote on the amendment, so Madam Secretary will call for the vote on that.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table, so now we will vote on that amended motion.
Yes, sir, and that amendment passed 6 to 0.
We'll go ahead and, yeah, we'll go ahead and then offer the vote on the amended motion.
Yes, sir. Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries 5 to 1 to approve resolution number R2021-CUP21-00016.
All right, thank you. Moving forward to public hearing number three. Member Little, would you read into the record the reason for the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing number three, a request by Emily Towngate, applicant owner, for approval of a zone change from Light Industrial M1 District to the General Commercial GC District on approximately 3.7353 acres of land, to which general location is 4650 Dixie Farm Road, Pearland, Texas.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to the staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, Mohammed, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Mayor. So this one is a request for a zone change from the Light Industrial, also M1, to the General Commercial, also known as GC, on approximately 3.7 acres of land located at 4650 Dixie Farm Road. Staff has not received any public comments regarding this request. The zoning map shows the general location of this triangular-shaped property located on the north side of Dixie Farm, surrounded, you can see, with the Light Industrial zoning from almost the entirety perimeter of the site, with the exception of the PD, the French Quarter PD on the north side, just a little bit on the north side. The future, the future land use map has this property. Again, this is an aerial photo that shows the site is developed with this approximately 11,000 square foot commercial building built in 1982, according to the appraisal district records, and the property is designated on the future land use plan as Light Industrial. Obviously, this proposed zone change for commercial zoning is inconsistent with that Light Industrial designation. The Nexus lights are photos that shot for the subject property. You can see that existing building on the property, again, built in 1982, it's a commercial building. And the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request and had a public hearing on it on June 7, and after the hearing and the discussion, the commission voted to recommend approval, I'm sorry, made a recommendation to approve the zoning change. However, the recommendation failed to pass by a vote of 2 to 4, and so the supermajority vote by the city council would be required to approve this request. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
All right, moving to the applicant report.
Council members, I'm Becky Cornelius. My address is 2415 Golf Crest, Pearland, Texas. A little past history of that building on Dixie Farm Road, it's right across the street from the Hill Sandpit. That building's been empty for about 15 years. It was for sale, Light Industrial, had no interest, very little interest to no interest, and the history in that area has kind of changed. If you'll drive around town, some places and some areas do change. The new subdivisions going up on Pearland Parkway, now that, I mean, on Dixie Farm, and now that Dixie Farm is all the way through and cleaned up, all the way to 35, you see a lot of changes in that area. When Emily, I'm representing Emily Towngate, she's the owner of the swim facility that's going in there now. What's left over is she has 5,000 square feet of offices. The industrial people that have called, which there were two, there were two industrial companies that called, said they would never be able to do anything with that small of a lot. Plus, the drainage district just took another 100 feet from the back of her property all the way along the creek, which makes the property even less deep. The two properties on either side of her are vacant and have been vacant for years and years. They're old Pearland families and have maintained that property for a very long time. I just see a change coming around, and it just seems like it should be, since she has a swim school. She teaches infant swim ISR classes that are all designated and all approved. You've got a school in there, so what better to have in there would be another school? And let me read you the school that we have gotten an application for. It's Special Graces, and they provide services to special needs individuals. This includes a day habilitation center in which staff works with individuals on life skills, arts and crafts, games, and attend community outings. Also, can range, ages can range from young adults to older adults. These people have had their office in Pearland for the last 10 years. They have their facility in Manville for the last 10 years. They would like to add their two facilities together and have it all in one place, where their offices and their clients and their workers are all at the office at the same time. This building also has a room the size of a gymnasium that would be a great arts and crafts room, or a facility for a cafeteria, or just all kinds of activities that they could use. No one else has had any interest in the building, and with it being vacant this many years and having a wonderful tenant that we already have, would seem a shame that we would let another 5,000 square feet go to waste. If you'll see on the thing on there, it's a triangle property, and her property is kind of on the back of it, which is surrounded, it doesn't show there, but it's surrounded by a parking area. There isn't a lot of leftover land to use for industrial. In the recent past, city council has changed, right behind this property, on the other side of the creek, is the end of Industrial Drive. Industrial Drive has now been, the end of Industrial Drive has now been taken away from Light Industrial. The zone has been changed from Light Industrial to General Business. So, I mean, not General Business, yeah, General, General Commercial, which is kind of setting a precedent and giving us an idea that in our area, in the east end of Pearland, not so much industrial is being looked for in this area. Maybe they'd like better access to 288 or access to the Beltway. I think that's it, and I was wondering if y'all might have any questions for us?
Yeah, when we get to questions from the council, we'll certainly have those. Does that complete the applicant's presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving forward would be questions and comments and concerns from council, so we'll open it up to the council. I would like to talk a little bit about this particular area. The applicant, Ms. Cornelius, did kind of touch on something, and that is, this area seems to have been changing a little bit over the last several years. A lot of it has been zoned M1, and the future land use plan does talk about industrial in the future. There's probably plus or minus 700 acres in this general vicinity, down 35 from High School South, that is in the either light or heavy industrial category, but I do think there's some changing, and I think the market is reacting to it. I've often wondered if this particular area with, especially with the French Quarter PUD being approved several years ago, and then just this particular applicant as well, if some of this area shouldn't be really looked at closer with our comprehensive plan and moving away from, you know, the industrial category, even some residential in this area, which we complement it down to that, at least down to Dixie Farm Road from the northern subdivision down to Dixie Farm Road on the east side of Main Street or 35. Seems to be some changes going on there. I don't think personally that 700 acres of industrial will happen. I do think there probably will be a mix of uses up and down this corridor over time, and I'd like to encourage as we go through that comprehensive update, comprehensive plan update, that we take a look at that. But I also want to say this, from a staff's perspective, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission's perspective, they have several documents that they look at, one being the comprehensive plan, another thing being the future land use plan, and when applicants come in and it deviates from those two documents routinely, their response is to recommend denial, because that's kind of their bible that they go by, and so, but ultimately, if we're gonna change that, it's up to this body to make that change. And so, those that are on the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as our staff, if council chooses with six votes to go against the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning, I mean, that is the prerogative of council, and it starts setting a tone, you know, moving forward. So I wanted to throw that out there. The expectation level would be that Planning and Zoning would deny this because of the future land use plan and those types of things. That's kind of their charge to look at. So with that, I want to turn that over to council, and do remind when we get to vote, it would take six members, that includes Mr. Hernandez. And do remind when we get to vote, it would take six members, that includes Mr. Hernandez that's online. So you'd have to have all members tonight vote in favor of this to change the, the recommendation from planning and zoning. Oh, well, oh, we do. We don't have the printed agenda the way we, we normally have it. I do need to open it up for public comment. Those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request, thank you, council member, for keeping me in check. We'll do the second attempt at anyone speaking, wanting to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And then third and final time, anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll then move to council questions, comments, and concerns. Member?
Can the staff assist and pull up the survey with a plat image? This is the image with the zoning overlay.
Would you like it from our GIS or was one of the images that I was in the presentation?
Survey or the plat, or if you have the agenda, page 172 of the 874 on the packet. Let me zoom in slightly on that. I, I think this is very illustrative of, of kind of what the issue is. There's easements on the southern boundary along Dixie Farm Road. There's a drainage easement on the northern boundary. This, this tract is just really troubled. There's not a lot to do with it. I think the industrial use is, as the applicant illustrated, is probably just not going to be there. Second, I have small children. They've gone through ISR. I'm a believer in this. This has saved my kid's life. And with the amount of families that we have, there's not a ton of these facilities around. So I think this is a public benefit. And so I'm very excited, first of all, that we're stealing a business from Manville. Second, I'm excited for the community. And I think this is a very positive use for a relatively tortured piece of land that we can get value for the citizens, as well as taxable value, and the, the business owner feels good about it. So I'll be approving this change.
Comment?
Yeah, if, if I can, I have heard from both the applicant and from some members of the Planning and Zoning Committee that I, I think there was a, at least some degree of kind of miscommunication or misunderstanding and that all the information that we were able to hear tonight wasn't necessarily shared with the Planning and Zoning Committee. So I, I think that probably weighed heavily into that outcome as well. And so I, I feel that based on the discussion that we've had tonight, I feel comfortable with it and suspect that there might have been a different outcome there if all that information was, was provided. So thank you for those clarifications and appreciate that.
Comment? Member Little?
Yeah, I've been, I've driven by this place many times and it was frankly starting to become an eyesore. And I'm glad somebody's in there now and fixing the place up. I actually drove over there prior to the meeting. I was hoping someone would be there. I could see the improvements, but I'm glad somebody wanted to take a chance on it. And there's no reason why we should deprive them of being able to utilize the entire building. So I'll be a yes.
Member Carbone?
Yeah, I'd support it. I agree. I drive by it way too much and I look forward to the development. I guess the, the, the issue to everybody else in the room is all this zoning that we're looking at, this is all in our GIS. So it's all public on our website. So we got a potential here to have a huge black eye saying the city's bad and we're not supporting small business, but this is, that's, that's not the case. I mean, a lot of, and all, all the maps, all the zoning, all that's public. So before, before anybody goes out and buys a piece of property and then is, is upset with us because they can't do what they need to do, all this is public prior to closing on it. So I look forward for the project moving forward.
Yeah, I have no problem with it at all going in. And I think other, other things that council members said, you know, it's very supportive of, of this, moving this forward. There's some changes need to be made at some point in time down the road when we go back in the comprehensive plan. That's when we'll make those changes through there. But I'm in support of this to go ahead and listen.
Yeah, that's, remember, that's kind of where my comments were, that, you know, we have certain documents in place and we charge our Planning and Zoning Commission as well, or our staff, to follow those documents. And when something's outside of that, generally speaking, the expectation is to deny it. But that's, that's why we're here to advance the ball forward. So with that, member Hernandez, did you have anything? Want to make sure I didn't exclude you online?
Thank you, mayor. I, I just wanted to kind of echo your comments and maybe bring forward that there was a comment made in the public hearing in P and Z about this, this being maybe seen as spot zoning. And so, yeah, we could go back and I don't know if staff has a timeline on when it might be appropriate to kind of reevaluate the, the planning for this corridor. As you had mentioned earlier, I would, I would definitely like to echo your sentiments for this stretch of Dixie Farm, for sure. But I'm, I'm for this change tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that. That seems to conclude council's comments and questions on this, staff's given their report. Do you have any questions further, Martin or John?
I'll just say that as part of the comprehensive plan update, we will be looking at the future land use map. But I will point out that because the, the current zoning is industrial, the future land use map does call for industrial, we are getting into spot zoning territory. And so by rezoning this area, what you're looking at is opening this entire parcel, this area along Dixie Farm to commercial in the future. It's when future applicants come forward and seek the same, if, if they're denied, then this could be seen as spot zoning. So just an understanding that you're not just looking at rezoning this parcel, you're looking at potentially in the future rezoning adjacent parcels to the same.
And can I just ask for my own, improving my own understanding? Just kind of the rationale and what's acceptable for doing a zone change here versus doing a CUP? And why, why we're going for the zone change route versus the CUP?
Because the use that they're seeking is not permitted by right or by conditional use permit in the existing district.
Understood. Thank you. So maybe, maybe that's another kind of thing as we reevaluate that of, in order to avoid this kind of spot zoning is opening up the ability to, to use conditional use permit so that this would then revert if there was something that member Cam Carr wouldn't find as attractive as, as this kind of development. But, you know, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but it's maybe something to look at in the future.
Just briefly, John, for the, the staff, when we start looking at that rezoning, the easement on the north end that BD4 did for drainage purposes, I think really changed my viewpoint on what could be the use here. I think when we move forward and start talking about those zone changes, we need to really take that into account because the industrial use starts getting peeled back when you're taking 100 feet, you know, and, and the depth of what's out there just starts to go away. So it's just something for, how are we interacting with the other jurisdictions? Because I think that really changes the complexion of what's happening.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Seeing no other comments or questions, we'll adjourn the, the public hearing and move to the new business item number three. Member Owens, would you place that on the table for consideration?
All right, consideration possible action. First reading ordinance number 2000M dash 209, so moved.
So we have a motion and a second. We've had staff report. We did have Ms. Becky Cornelius that did submit a, a form to speak on this. Do you have anything else to add, Ms. Cornelius?
No, sir, unless y'all have any questions. I, I would like to apologize to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did not know that that was a public hearing, that I should have been in attendance. But had I known, I would have been there and I would have given the information. That, that's my fault, not theirs.
Good deal, good deal. Appreciate that. So with that, we will call for the vote. Madam Secretary?
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2000M dash 209.
All right, thank you. Moving forward in our agenda.
Thank you.
Down to consent agenda, we're back to Mr. Orlando. Are there any items to be removed from consent?
I'd like to remove item D as in dog.
Any others? Seeing none, Mr. Orlando, would you present consent agenda with the exception of D as in dog?
Absolutely, mayor. Consideration of possible action on the consent agenda, items A through L, with the exception of D, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to approve consent items A through L, with the exception of item D.
All right, thank you. Moving to new business continued, item number four. Member Carbone, present that if you would.
Thank you, mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2021 dash 135, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. We've been approached by the Houston Galveston Area Council, our regional planning organization, for participation in the steering committee on transit needs. This does not presume or assume anything beyond the, the need to, to look at possibilities and options. But there is requested a member of the council to serve on that and suggests that there be a, a council appointment to, to participate in that. There is no cost to the city for this work that's going to be going on underway. Nothing to add.
Completes the staff report into questions, comments, concerns from council. I will state that I had put forth member Hernandez's name for consideration for this. That's why it's in the AR.
I think me and Perez would be out too, the cost for an 18 month commitment. We're both off in about 11 months.
That was part of the consideration. We have a couple of folks rolling out. We've got a couple of folks up for reelection and just felt like from a time commitment that, that member Hernandez would, would be a good fit there.
I guess a question for staff. I, I filled a couple of questions today. Can you talk about the scope of, of, I guess, what this study will be? And, and the concerns I'm hearing is mass transit into Houston. Is it, is it into Houston or is it east-west Pearland? What, any ideas on what the scope is?
Trent's been working with HAC and can maybe touch on that a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, mayor and council. The, the scope was basically to take a look at, you know, at the, at the transit needs for Pearland. You know, whether that be options for parking ride, internal to Pearland, or special needs type transit needs. And then go from there and look at what kind of funding opportunities or options are there to fulfill those needs. So as Mr. Pearson stated, it doesn't presuppose any outcomes. It's a, a look at what the needs are of the community. It takes a, a wide breadth of the community onto the stakeholders group to provide that input. And we'll include public meetings as well and, and then determine the, the needs of the community from there and then how to best fulfill those needs.
So it's wide open?
It's, it's, I mean, considered wide open to look at what, what all the options are.
So, so the folks that question the scope and have feelings, passionate one way or the other, they need to be involved in the public hearings to get their, their opposition?
They need to be involved. There's going to be a lot of opportunities for public input to make sure we do get the consensus of the community. And then, of course, any recommendations that come out of this will, will have to take future actions as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
So just, Mr. President, for the benefit of the community, what we're voting on is just to appoint a member and HAC is going to do a study and that's it at this juncture. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I, I had consternation very, very early on when I got started about the mass transit. We had a multimodal plan that really folded in parks. It was actually the Parks and Rec Plan. And I got a lot of nonsense from some of the members because I was very vociferous about the mass transit piece. I don't believe Pearland needs bus rapid transit in the city. That's my opinion. Now, I do agree there's one or two areas that mass transit makes sense, and that's the Kirby Corridor into the medical center. I'm actually not a believer in mass transit. It costs about a million dollars a mile. But that is one of the few areas probably in this country where that makes actual sense. Just for the body, for the bureaucrats to know, if there is bus rapid transit recommendations, I will be against them, period, point blank. I'm not, there's just not a lot of room for discussion on that. But for the benefit of having the interaction with the council, I do believe member Hernandez needs to be on there and that if you do have concerns, member Hernandez will be our representative. And if you have questions on bus rapid transit, that's the guy I would talk to. But where I'm at, I'm probably not moving off that issue.
Good comment.
Bureaucrats, do you have what you need with, with that going forward? Just wanted to make sure. But yeah, we're, all we're talking about is putting Adrian on a committee. I'm, I'm happy to do that. Any recommendations from that? Happy to go into those on a future discussion. I know we have a pretty packed agenda tonight. So, thank you.
And in addition to, he's, he's the only member from council that will be on it, but we have other staff members, PDC. I think the chamber's got some, some members on it. I mean, it's not just one person from Pearland. It's, I think the whole committee has probably 12 probably members from Pearland or staff that will be a part of it. So certainly there will be an opportunity for public discussion in open house. And, and all good comments. Appreciate your passion on that and I appreciate your standing. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, madam chair, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 135, appointing member Adrian Hernandez to the steering committee.
All right, moving forward in the agenda, new business item number five. Member Hernandez, would you present that for discussion?
Yes, mayor, we have a presentation and discussion on compensation classification study completed by Evergreen LLC. I'll turn it over to staff. Thank you.
And I guess before we get to the staff report, which is really a presentation over the comp and class study, I'd like to bring up Mr. Adam Carroll. Yeah, he's speaking on behalf of the PPOA, so five minutes if you need it.
Hopefully not, but maybe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam Carroll, 12511 Britt Road, 77581. I am president of the Pearland Police Officers Association, representing roughly 180 members, both civilian and sworn. I'm speaking on behalf of them today and so appreciate you allowing me to speak before you again. So since we spoke last, I want to kind of retouch base on a few issues. One of those being when this survey was done back, initiated back in 2016, 2017, one of the goals of that was to establish a baseline to know where we're at and when we do it in the future, where we've come. This new company has basically effectively erased that baseline and we've started all over again. And that is, here's why I'm saying that. Their methodology is different from the original companies. And to me, probably just as importantly, the cities being used for comparison are different. And here's some examples I'll give you with that is they're listing 19 cities, asked how many of those cities were used to compare just PD? My response was 19 cities depending on what rank. Okay, patrol officer only, bottom rank. How many cities were compared? 13. 2016 survey, we used 10 to compare to PD. So we've now added three more. And of those 13, only four were from the last survey. Last time I was here, I told you it was five. The 13 cities that they emailed me excluded League City PD, which is The thirteen cities that they emailed me excluded League City PD, which is probably our most comparable city and one of our biggest competitors for police personnel. So certainly you can see some issues with establishing this baseline here. I know there's been some discussion on comparison cities and who to use and who not to use. I know Baytown and Pasadena, I think, were thrown out because they've got oil and gas industries in their city. I don't want to be argumentative, but I stood in this room, sat in this room more times than I can count and heard city employees compared to school district employees and private sector employees. I don't think it was fair then. I don't think it's fair now to compare those. And at least these cities, at least we're comparing apples to apples and not an apple to an orange. The Evergreen recommendation for a step plan for the fire department and other civilian employees, hundred percent agree with that. I would again have you think back to what Mr. Ward, what the Fire Department Association said in his presentation two weeks ago. If you don't have some type of something in place for the civilian employees, including the fire department, again, you can spend twenty or thirty years with the city, retire with the city and effectively still be retiring at your starting pay. And that just is mind blowing. You are spending money to get people certified and trained in specialties, not just in the PD and FD, but with all civilian staff. And five, ten years down the road, they're still making starting pay, but one of our competing agencies has an opening for more pay. Don't be surprised if they jump ship, especially when they can't ever reach a top out pay here. My recommendation would simply be let's stop moving the goalpost. If this is going to be the bar that we set, let's not change it four years down the road and be using completely different cities and a whole nother methodology. It's just, it's not fair to the city employees at all. I would really encourage using simple math instead of the witchcraft math. Again, our market survey says four and a half to eight percent above, depending on the cities they used. And Evergreen's math says we're two percent above market. And that's just for PD. Fire expressed what their opinion was on that two weeks ago. And to create some sort of step plan for the civilian staff. I just really think that's something that we can work together on. I am more than happy to be open to conversation. I know Mr. Ward is open as well. And just please discuss amongst yourselves and city staff of how we can get to this end goal, this end game, so that it's fair and equitable for all your employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Carroll. Good comments. Now we'll move into staff report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lorraine James, our HR Director, will introduce the presentation this evening. Ray?
Good evening, City Council, City Manager Clay Pearson, and all who were present in person or virtually. We started the common class process in November of 2020 with Evergreen Solutions to determine our market position and competitiveness. And with that, Mark Holcomb from Evergreen Solutions is here to present the findings of the common class study.
And just for the record, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, if you would. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Mark Holcomb and I live in Tallahassee, Florida, 3037 Corv Drive. And so I think there's going to be a PowerPoint presentation that'll be pulled up. What's being shown right now is the final report, which is a more lengthy document that we certainly wouldn't have time for tonight, but it should be entered into the record if anybody wants to read. It's got some more details about the methodology, about some of the data that we collected as well. So going ahead and jumping into the presentation, if we can advance one slide. A short overview real quick of what we will talk about tonight. I do know, and we've heard a couple of times, how much there is on the agenda still. I'll try to go quickly through the, you know, pieces that may not be as much of interest to the people in the room today, but I'm certainly happy to address anything via question if anybody wants to ask. But we will do a little bit of a review about the study goals at a high level, what we were brought in to do, the project phases overall, so from beginning to sort of the conclusion, where we're getting close to now. We'll talk about the employee meetings. And so during those employee meetings, I actually came out myself and met with employees here in this room, as well as throughout the city. I got to hear some of the concerns from them firsthand and some of the things that the employees, you know, some of the things that they wanted us to be aware of. We'll talk about the current system review. So some of the things that we found when we looked at the data, the compensation data from the city of Pearland before Evergreen made any recommendations or before anything had changed in the process. We'll talk about the JAT, which was the survey that employees had the opportunity to fill out and give us some information about their jobs. And then I think sort of at the end there will be the pieces of the most interest, the compensation survey, as well as the next steps and recommendations. So if we go ahead and move on to the study goals, we were asked to come in and look at the current classification as well as compensation system. And we really had two main focuses, which one was to look at the internal equity of the system and the second was to look at the external equity. So the internal equity would be the way that positions inside the city of Pearland relate to each other. So if you're performing a certain, you know, set of duties and responsibilities and somebody else is in another department doing the exact same thing, you would probably expect to be compensated in a similar manner. It doesn't mean you'll necessarily have the exact same take-home pay, because maybe they've been with the city a little bit longer and advanced a little bit into the pay structure. But you would expect to have a similar range. Likewise, you might look at your supervisor or somebody at a higher rank and you might expect them to have a higher range of compensation available because of the additional duties and responsibilities. And so those are the kind of relationships that we looked at internally, but we also looked externally. So the external equity piece is essentially the same thing. We made comparisons between the duties and tasks that positions were performing here at the city of Pearland, but we compared them to outside organizations. And so that's what you heard a moment ago about those different peers that we looked at, the different comparators. We have come back with a set of recommendations that we believe will allow the city to maximize the internal as well as external equity in the system. So the only point of emphasis there I'll make is if you see something in the external market portion where it says a certain position is two or three percent behind market or maybe some positions are above market, that is not the sole determination of the recommendations. We did look at the internal system as well to try to make sure that we're not creating any issues with compression or inversion between internal positions. So if we go ahead and advance now, the project phases, we do essentially divide it up into four different phases here at a high level. And so phase one is outreach. That really talks about data collection, employee meetings that we had here onsite, collecting data from employees. It also included all of the data that we collected from HR. And so Lorraine that spoke earlier was definitely a big part of giving us that data and providing us with the things that we needed to get started here. It also includes the job data that we collected directly from employees. So that job assessment tool or the JAT, that data was an individual survey that employees had the opportunity to fill out, to tell us what they're responsible for, what tasks, what duties, and essentially what they do on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. Phase two started immediately after the data collection was done. Phase two is really looking at the classification structure, looking at job titles, looking at those internal relationships, looking at how positions relate to each other. It did include an analysis of the JATs. And so that was reading through every single one of those surveys that came back to make sure that we have the best understanding that was possible of the work that's being performed here. Starting shortly after phase three, excuse me, shortly after phase two was phase three. So we did sort of do those more or less at the same time, but we definitely wanted to start with phase two first so we could get a head start reading those JATs to make sure that we can use the actual data collected from employees when we make that external comparison. So the compensation analysis in phase three sort of piggybacked right behind the phase two with the JATs. We did do a compensation survey. We looked at the market and we believe we've come back with a market positioning based on how you compare to the peers that we looked at in this study. Phase four is the solution phase. So we've had a number of different recommendations that we've worked with HR and with city leadership to essentially see what's going to work here for the city. So Evergreen did make all these recommendations, but again, we did have some back and forth about, you know, is this something that you feel like is going to be able to work for your system? And if not, we were happy to recommend some tweaks. The reporting today, we do consider that part of the reporting here, me presenting findings and essentially letting you all know what we found. But we also have, again, this presentation has been entered into the record as well as the final report, which will have some additional details that we won't be able to talk about today. So after the project phase, if we go on to the next slide, we have some feedback that we received from employees. And so when we met with employees, we essentially asked some high-level questions to employees. We did not take down names. We did not take down departments unless employees wanted to share that. And so the employee comments, we had a lot of positive comments from employees about what they liked about working here for the city of Pearland. And so talking about those comments, benefits was a big one. Employees did feel like the benefits package, including some specific benefits that are listed up there, were something that they were happy about at their job. The schedule, so the sort of that work-life balance or the opportunity to be able to do some other things besides just working all the time. Employees appreciated the fact that the city allows them to do that. Employees also talked about growth. And so a number of employees did mention they felt like they had an opportunity to be with the city as it grows and as it has continued to grow, as well as the culture. So the last sort of positive note that employees mentioned a lot was the culture here. So some of that dealt with relationships, dealing specifically with their own supervisor or with other employees in their department. Some employees, it said there, in the public safety positions as well, mentioned that they appreciate that the citizens support them. And so when we came, I believe it was six to eight months ago when we came out here the first time, obviously it was in the middle of the COVID pandemic. It was the middle of some other incidents that are happening across the country. And so the police, as well as fire and public safety, did mention that they felt the support they get from citizens in Pearland was something they appreciated here as well. If we go to the next slide, I believe we will be talking about some of the concerns that citizens, excuse me, that employees had as well. And so there were concerns about a weakening market positioning. And so the specific concerns there that were mentioned in a few different meetings were from employees who have been with the city for a long time. Some employees mentioned that in the past, they really felt like the city of Pearland was the market leader and they really, that was where everybody would want to be from a compensation standpoint. But they believe that the compensation has slipped a little bit in recent years. And so we'll talk about what our findings were in a minute when we get to the compensation survey. But essentially, this was the perception that some of the employees shared. There was some concern about internal equity specifically relating to compression. And so we've already had sort of one comment about that being addressed with the step plan of how that might help things. But when employees have been with the city for a number of years and they're not seeing any advancement year after year, or maybe their pay goes up by two percent and the pay plan goes up by two percent as well, which means that that minimum stays right there with them, that was a concern that employees had. And so that compression was definitely something that was mentioned. Job descriptions, some employees did highlight that they felt like there were some updates that were needed with the job descriptions in the city. That is something that is essentially going to be the last deliverable that we'll have on this project is updated job descriptions. And then there were some comments about merit increases from employees. Some employees did mention they felt like it wasn't exactly fair if they work harder or if they're more efficient at work, they receive the same increase as somebody else who essentially just shows up and punches the clock every day. So those were some of the comments that we did hear from employees. It's important to note, again, these are perceptual in nature. This is how some employees, not every single employee feels, but we did go forward and try to validate everything that we could over the course of the study and certainly didn't make any recommendations strictly based on perceptual comments. So if we advance to the next slide, we did talk a little bit about the current system. So we looked at the current system rather, and I want to talk a little bit about that today. We found some strengths and some weaknesses with the current compensation system at the city of Pearland. And so we did like the overall structure of the pay plan in general. You did have consistent range spreads in most of the grades as well as midpoint progressions. Essentially, what that means is if you look at an employee who's in a lower pay grade versus a higher, they would have had a similar amount of growth that they could have anticipated from the beginning to the end of their career. If you look at the midpoint progressions, that's how the different pay grades relate to each other. So if you're moving up, if you receive a promotion, we liked the progression that we saw in the pay plan. The city has done a pretty good job, for the most part, with advancing employees through the pay grade. However, we'll talk about in a moment, there were some, you know, there was some compression that we did identify. But here we did see about eighty-two percent of employees, we did see at or above their quote-unquote "expected salary." If that expected salary is calculated by looking at from the beginning to the end of your career, would an employee have the opportunity to make it up close to the maximum of their pay? And so that eighty-two percent, again, you don't always see that in the public sector. You know, it's not something we see with every single client we work with. There was also a strong positive relationship between tenure and pay grade penetration. And so what that essentially means is the employees who have been at the city the longest are typically the ones who are further progressed in the ranges. Not every single case again, but that was the typical trend that we saw. If we advance, we can talk about some of the, oh, excuse me, I guess this will show you actually the graph that talks about that expected salary. And so I understand it's a little small for everybody to see here necessarily, but if you look at the different colors up there, you will see the green and the gold and the purple, those represent the employees who essentially are at their expected salary or above that expected salary. If you look at that orange and the blue at the bottom, those represent the employees who essentially are experiencing some of that compression, who have not advanced quite as quickly as they might have expected. And so again, you do see some of that orange and blue there. Obviously, the green, the gold and the purple are going to be much more prevalent on this exhibit. So if you advance to the next slide, here's where we'll talk a little bit about compression. So there are a couple of different types of compression that you can see. The range compression is what we were talking about on that exhibit that we just saw. So employees in the same job or in the same pay grade, different levels of experience, but essentially not progressing sufficient pay variation. So if an employee has been in the job for ten years and they're making the same amount as an employee who just started, we would call that a little bit of range compression. Again, there may be a reason for that. If you have a low performer, if you have somebody who, there's a specific instance of why they wouldn't have advanced, it's not to say every single instance is something that would need to be corrected, but it at least merits looking into. Rank compression is something we talked about before and that we did keep in consideration when we made our recommendations. So the rank compression between an employee and their supervisor, that was something that we did look into and I believe we have an exhibit in the final report that addresses that as well. So if we advance one more slide, here's where we will talk about some of the weaknesses that we saw in the current system. So there was some compression, as I mentioned before. So we saw both compression with employees not advancing quite as quickly as they would have expected, as well as with their supervisors. And so again, not as bad as you might see in some other cities, but it is present. And certainly that doesn't help an employee who's experienced that compression feel any better if they know it might be different in another city. We did see about ten percent of the employee workforce at the minimum of the pay grade and another ten percent capped out at the maximum of the pay grade. Once again, for these employees, some of those ten percent were brand-new hires. And so that's okay. But that ten percent number was a little bit higher than it maybe should have been just based on the brand-new hires that would have come in in the last year, which indicates some of the things that we've talked about. If an employee advances and the pay grade advances with them, they never move off of that pay grade minimum. About three-quarters of the city employees were below the midpoint of the pay grade. And so again, a number of those employees were newer and would have expected to have been below, but we did run a second analysis to see how many of those employees essentially had fifteen-plus years of tenure. And there were a number of those employees as well. So they've been with the city for more than fifteen years and they have not advanced past the midpoint of the pay grade. So again, these are some of the things that we highlighted, some of the things that we've discussed with HR and get into in our recommendations. And this sort of concludes the internal analysis that we'll be sharing today. If you advance, we'll talk a little bit about the JAT completion. So this was that survey that I mentioned before where employees had the opportunities to essentially tell us what tasks, duties, and responsibilities they had. So we did send out eight hundred and thirty-one JAT surveys to employees and six hundred and ninety-eight of those were returned to us complete. So that's a very good percentage, eighty-four percent. We typically shoot and hope to have at least sort of two-thirds to about seventy percent is what we hope for. So with that eighty-four percent, we were very happy about that number. The number of JATs that were reviewed by the supervisor, again, we tried to have about two-thirds to seventy percent reviewed. We had about eighty-one percent here. And I'll just take one second to mention the JAT review. We send out the survey to employees and have them fill out telling us what they do, what their responsibilities are, and we ask their supervisor to validate that for us. what their responsibilities are, and we ask their supervisor to validate that for us. Because if we see something that is a little bit different than what we would have expected, we want to make sure we had a second person at the city of Pearland who's essentially verified and validated that information for us. And so having that strong number of supervisor reviews, 81%, was definitely something we were happy to see. And it helps us have confidence in the JATs that we're making recommendations based on, because again, we've had that information validated by another city employee here. So if we advance to the next slide, here's where we can start talking about that compensation survey. And so on the right-hand side of the screen, you do see the list of market peers that we made comparisons to. You'll also see a cost-of-living factor posted off to the right-hand side. We did have 19 different responses to the survey. All of the responses were adjusted for cost of living. You will notice if you read through that list, a number of the peers were essentially what you could call competitors for talent here in the Houston area. So there are other cities, there are places that employees could go to work if they decided to leave the city of Pearland. But we also included some comparators from across the state. So those are cities that have similar characteristics, similar population sizes within the state of Texas, so that not only are you looking at those, essentially those local market peers, you're also looking at, you know, how is compensation changing in general? What are the trends and best practices across the state? And we did compare both salary ranges as well as average actual salaries. And so the salary range is what we've talked a little bit about thus far. So the minimum of your range that you would get upon being hired, the maximum of the range that you can't advance beyond. But we also looked at average actuals. So we could actually see what are the actual take-home salaries that employees are receiving. So it's all well and good to have a nice pay range, but if your actual pay is at the very bottom of your range where it should be higher, we wanted to be able to make a statement on that as well. We did look at 88 different jobs directly. And those 88 different jobs did represent the entirety of the city, so different departments, different pay grades. We did use the job assessment tools to be able to make comparisons on, market comparisons on jobs outside of those 88. And so for an example there, if you have a couple of different levels of an administrative position, we may not have surveyed, in the survey, the level 1, 2, 3. But what we can do is actually make a comparison and see how much spacing should there be between the level 1 and 2. And in that way, if we receive a response to the level 1 position, we can make a definitive statement on the market positioning of that level 2 as well, because we know based on the responsibilities, the duties, et cetera, where that position should be falling as well. If we go ahead and advance to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the results. So displayed up on the, the results there, you've got essentially three different sections. On the left-hand side, you will see the unadjusted salary results. So you've got the minimum, midpoint, maximum. In the middle, you see the cost-of-living adjusted result. And then on the right-hand side, you see the actual salary comparison number. And so I'm going to skip over the left-hand side, the unadjusted results, and talk a little bit about the adjusted results there. You do see a differential of about 3% behind the market there for the city when you adjust for cost of living. And so that 3% differential, it does indicate an average number across all of the benchmarks we compared. There were a number of positions that we found to be in a strong market position, but there were also some positions that we found to be in even worse position than you see on the board. There were some positions who had fallen further behind market. So this is an average number that we're displaying up there. And it does show that the city has slipped a little bit behind the market position that you might expect to see, that the city would hope to be when comparing to these peers. When you look at the average actual salary comparison on the right-hand side, this is the salaries, the take-home pay, essentially the base pay that employees are receiving every year. And you see that number's actually even a little bit lower, so about negative 7.9%. This number here indicates sort of what we talked about before, where there are some employees who are not progressing as quickly at the city of Pearland than they would have expected to, or that they would expect to have participated, excuse me, that they would have expected to progress at one of these other organizations that we compared to. So that number shows a little bit more of a gap to the market with the actual pay that employees are receiving than the pay ranges that we have. So I do want to emphasize one more time, these are average numbers. Each position received its own comparison in the market. And so some were doing a little better, some were a little further behind. But this does represent the overall positioning. So if we advance to the next slide, we looked at some supplemental pay information as well. And so this was something that we went out and collected data from each of these peers that you saw listed earlier. We also had HR work and collect some data as well, and they provided some of that, that we did review that information as well. So we got a lot of data on supplemental pay. And we did find there are some supplemental pays essentially that other organizations are offering that we certainly wanted to take a look at doing here. There were a lot of supplemental pays in public safety, which I don't think will surprise anybody. That's where we saw a large number of the supplemental pays. We did see some in public works as well. Fire supplemental pay was typically centered around EMT and paramedic certifications. And so you see there some numbers about exactly how much those could have been. We also did look at the overall employee benefits package to see essentially how much is Pearland spending on their benefits package versus how much are the peer organizations spending on their benefits package? Just to see, not a comprehensive comparison of every single benefit, but is the city spending about the same amount as the peers are? And we did find that yes, the city of Pearland is meeting the market essentially in the benefits offering, at least as far as that dollar value. The last certification pay that I will mention was related to bilingual pay. We did see a number of the other cities are providing bilingual pays. And so we are working with HR right now to come up with a specific policy and recommendation on that bilingual pay as one of the more important certifications that we actually did hear about from employees, as well as one of the ones we saw in the market. So if we advance to the next slide, we will start talking a little bit about recommendations here. So we are recommending essentially some new pay plans that could contain the pay ranges for employees here at the city. We have new step plans that we're recommending, that were alluded to earlier, for the fire and non-exempt employees. We are recommending exempt employees be placed onto a new pay structure as well that will be, that will remain open range that the city has been using currently. And then we also are recommending updating the civil service pay plan just to ensure that they maintain the strong market positioning that we found here. The pay grade assignments, we did look at how each position in the organization was slotted. And we did make recommendations to update some of those for market. So some positions are going to find that they're in a similar place to where they were before. But some positions, we did recommend an increase based on the market data that we found. Reclassifications, we didn't see quite as many of these, but we did recommend some reclassifications of titles and adjustments based on the duties that were being performed. And then the implementation methodology is something I'll share in just a moment. That's essentially going to be the way that the city gets the employees into the new pay structure. There's a couple of different ways to do that. When you recommend a change in a pay system, you do need to place the employees onto that structure. And I'll cover in a moment the couple of different ways that we can do that. The last thing that I'll mention here, the certification pays, as I mentioned, that bilingual certification pay, we did see the market rate of approximately that $75 per month. So we'll be spelling out some additional details with HR, such as which positions will qualify, what would you have to do to actually qualify for that? Not just every bilingual employee would actually receive that, but it would be those who can add value to the city and to the citizens by performing those bilingual duties on job duties essentially. As we skip forward, the next slide will talk a little bit about those implementation options. And I hope I can bring a little bit of clarity to the math that we used, essentially in these implementation options here. The bring-to-minimum option is sort of the baseline that you look at when you're implementing new salary structures. The bring-to-minimum is the first step. What that means is you look at an employee's current salary, you look at the pay grade that they're being assigned to. And if the employee is below the pay grade, you recommend that they get an increase up to the minimum of that new pay structure. This does not affect most employees. This is the cheapest implementation option. And we typically recommend that as a first step only, just to make sure employees are slotted into the new structure. Bring-to-minimum, left alone by itself, will cause significant compression because it does bunch up all the employees at the bottom of the pay plan at that minimum of the grade. So after you do the bring-to-minimum approach, we did take a look at a few different options here. Two that I've highlighted here are some that we discussed a little bit more in more detail with HR and city leadership. The 30-year tenure parity option is the one I'll focus on a little bit more because that is what we've highlighted in our recommendations. That 30-year tenure parity breaks down the pay range from the minimum to the maximum of the range and essentially divides it out into 30 equal pieces. So that represents the average length of a career that is typically used in HR studies all across the country. So you start your career at the minimum and by the time you've ended your career, again, you should be at that maximum of the pay range. It does look at the employee's exact time that they've spent in a classification. So if you've been here 10 years versus 11, or 10 years versus 10 and 1/2, it actually gives you a different projected salary based on every single day that you've spent at the city. But it does break down that pay structure from minimum to maximum over the course of 30 years. If an employee's been here for at least 15 years, they would be recommended to be at least at the minimum of the pay range. If an employee's been here for 10 years, again, they'd be 1/3 of the way through the pay structure. And so that's the recommended methodology that we would use is by actually looking at the amount of time employees have spent at the city. With that recommended implementation, we'll talk about cost in a moment. But that does address the compression that we saw in some of those employees who essentially have been left behind and have not advanced quite as quickly as they may have expected elsewhere. Compa ratio is another approach that we looked at. Compa ratio essentially, a compa ratio is the way your position and your actual salary relates to your pay grade midpoint. And so it's a simple ratio. If your, you know, pay is 90% of your midpoint, your compa ratio would be 90%. If you're making the midpoint of your pay range, you would be at a 100% compa ratio. And so the compa ratio implementation essentially keeps employees in the same relationship to their midpoint. So if your pay structure moves up by 5%, you would receive a 5% increase. If your pay grade doesn't move, you would not move. The compa ratio approach does a good job of addressing the market concerns that you might see, but it does not address compression. Compa ratio leaves employees in the same position relative to each other that they were in before the study, absent any market adjustments they would receive. And so we did think the 30-year tenure parity was a stronger option here, again, just to address that compression that we talked about earlier on. I do want to emphasize that no salaries were recommended to be decreased under any of the implementation methodologies that we looked at. And so if we did find a position in a strong place versus the market, we did not say, okay, let's equalize this and lower the salary. We kept the employees exactly where they were today. And then we'll talk about in a moment, we are recommending a 2% essentially cost-of-living increase to account for market movement over the past year. But we did not recommend a decrease to any salaries over the course of the study. So if we advance on, I believe, yeah, we've got some of the pros and cons for the step structures. And so we know this is a big change. We know some employees are, you know, have asked for this and certainly are looking to be placed onto a step structure. But I thought it was important for us to talk a little bit about the pros and cons that you see between a step structure and an open-range structure. So with the step structure, you do have consistency with regard to employee increases. So an employee can look at their step structure and they can essentially say, what's going to happen to me in year two and year three and year four, assuming that the finances are there to grant a step. When you look at an open-range structure, that's not always the case. It is subject to the funds available, of course, but an employee does not know if they're going to receive a 1% increase, 2%, 3%. And essentially sometimes that leads to employees being left behind. Employees can, you know, essentially calculate their future earning potential with a step structure with a little bit more certainty. And step structures do encourage employee salary progression because you can actually look at that planned increase of one step. You know what it's going to cost you to grant a one-step increase versus having the question of, do we do a 1%, 2%, 3%, you know, et cetera? Those are some of the pros for the step plan. There are a little, there are some cons as well. There's always going to be trade-offs. And so when you do a step structure, one of the things that you cannot do is you don't have as much flexibility with adjusting salaries. Essentially, if you're looking at a step structure, you either grant a step increase or you don't. And so if you cannot afford to grant a step increase in a single year, sometimes that does end up for employees being a little bit of a bummer. If you don't get a 1% instead of a zero because you can't afford to fully fund a step, that is something to be aware of. It also, it can be more expensive for a step structure for sure, depending on the way you implement them. Step structures are, again, that rigid, they require a certain increase each year if you're going to grant that step. And so that, you know, can lead to increased expense just because the percentage increase, you know, is typically higher with a step structure. Open-range plans do have a lot of flexibility in administration. You can do them in a less expensive way. So if there is a budget concern and you say, hey, we can't afford to do the full 2% or 3% increase this year, you can always grant a 1% increase or something smaller, just to say, we can do something even though we can't go all the way there. You can also use performance to determine salaries a little bit better with an open-range plan. So you can differentiate between somebody who would receive maybe 4% for high performance versus somebody who gets 2% just for showing up to adjust for cost of living. So those are some of the pros of the open-range plan. It can be difficult, we're talking about the cons of the open-range plan. We've sort of already addressed these, so I'll go a little quicker here. But employees can't necessarily project what they might receive because there is some more variation. It can result in smaller increases year over year. There is the temptation sometimes when you're looking at an open-range plan to say, yes, we could do a 2%, but what if we did a 1 and 1/2? You know, look at how much we could save. That can result in employees receiving smaller increases. And it can result in some compression issues as well. The step plans typically do a little bit better with the compression because you know you give a year of advancement, a one-step increase to employees, typically each year that funds are available. So if we advance to the next slide, we've got some solution option pros and cons as well. The bring-to-minimum, we've sort of covered these a little bit. It is the most cost-effective, it's the cheapest option. It has the lowest amount of change management because you essentially don't have to make many adjustments to employee salaries. However, it does cause compression. It has minimal salary correction beyond the range adjustments as well. So we would not recommend the bring-to-minimum as a final approach. It is a first step only typically that we would recommend. The tenure parity option that we are recommending does correct compression. It gives full credit to employees based on the amount of time that they've spent here with the city. And so that was something that we thought was important, looking at that compression that we found. The tenure parity option is more expensive, certainly than the bring-to-minimum, but also than some of the other approaches that we looked at. And it does adjust salary on time alone. And so if you did have any other market or performance-based increases that had been made, or if somebody had essentially been kept a little bit at a lower salary because of performance, one of the cons of the tenure parity is it does not capture that. It essentially says if you've been working here for eight years, you need to go to the, you know, expected salary for that eight-year employee. With the compa ratio, it does maintain an employee's current progression. So if you do feel like you've got a strong system in place, a strong merit system or something that does not have much compression, compa ratio is somewhere we like to look at. It is a very market-based approach, which again, in some instances is something we definitely like to see. But it does not correct for compression. It is expensive, and again, it's market-based only, does not correct for anything internal. So if we advance, I think we're getting to the last few slides here. So I appreciate your patience sticking with me. We do have some next steps then that we'll talk about. Oh, excuse me, and I guess we skipped this slide as well, the option costs. So on here, you have the option costs for each of the different recommended essentially implementations. We've broken it down by each employee group that you can look at. We've highlighted the different cost options that you'll essentially see that we're recommending. So we have one for fire, non-exempt employees, those are both the step plans. One important thing that I would like to mention on those step plans is they did receive the exact same tenure parity approach that we were looking at for the exempt employees on the open range. However, that expected salary almost always leaves an employee in between two different steps. So then we had to take the approach to essentially round employees up to the next closest step. So that is an additional cost with the step plan, as I mentioned before, some of that additional expense. I do want to indicate that, that if you are an employee looking at your exact expected salary, you would have to be rounded to the next step to fit onto this essentially step plan. We have the exempt and the executive and then the civil service as well. A few additional things that I want to highlight here. When looking at the 30-year parity approach, When looking at the thirty-year parity approach, we are recommending looking at a ten percent pay increase cap this year. That is for essentially to be more responsible with the financial resources that are available. It is something that the city could look at again next year. So you can essentially look at, okay, we did this calculation last year. Let's look at it again and see how much compression we have this year. And you could, again, grant another increase if you wanted to continue to work on that. But we are recommending that ten percent increase cap, again, based on the amount that it would have cost with the full increase. We do believe this will go a long way to correcting the compression. And we have set up market competitive pay ranges as well here. And so every single employee at the conclusion of this study, if these recommendations are implemented, would have been looked at and evaluated versus that compression and would be in a market competitive pay range. The last thing I want to mention as well is on the civil service plan, you do see that we've highlighted a one-step increase. That is the planned increase that civil service employees would receive for another year of service here. We included the cost just to make sure that the city wasn't blindsided. If you see a number here and you think that's the total cost for salary increases this year, and then you find out later you've got the additional cost. So we're not recommending an additional increase or an additional step, but we've essentially highlighted what that cost would be if the civil service employees do receive that step as scheduled. This does assume every employee would qualify. So obviously, the numbers are subject to some small changes from here. And I apologize, there was one other thing I should have mentioned. Each option here does look at a two percent increase for all employees. Again, that's to account for changes in cost of living, for an additional year of service, and for some progression into the range. And so if an employee was not scheduled to receive an increase under that tenure parity approach, we are looking at a two percent increase for that employee. We do believe the number shown up on the screen should be an all-inclusive salary-only cost that could be used to implement this system. Of course, it will be recurring year over year. There is an additional benefits component that finance will be able to assist with. But this is the total salary-only cost that we're looking at for this. If we go to the next slide, I believe we saw before was next steps. So the next steps that we would be looking at as a part of this study, assuming, you know, again, that there aren't any other major changes or revisions that we'd like to see. We will be providing post-orientation sessions to employees to explain exactly what we found, exactly what we believe occurred, and what we recommended as well, to make sure that employees have the opportunity to ask their questions and to make sure that employees understand what was done and why we recommended what we did. We also will have those revised class descriptions, as I mentioned. And essentially, the revised class descriptions are based on the job assessment tools that we received. Any information that employees put in there was analyzed and has the opportunity to go into their job description to essentially update the work that they're performing. If we advance again, I think that may be the last slide that we had, absolutely. I appreciate everybody's time today. I know it was a lot of information. But I'll be happy to address any questions or anything else that the council would like to bring up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holcomb, for a thorough presentation. I'm sure we'll have some questions for you here in just a minute. So we'll, this is a discussion item. There's nothing to vote on tonight. Obviously, staff is looking for direction in final preparation for the budget. So we'll open it up for council questions, comments, concerns at this point. Remember Owens?
Thank you, Mayor. Going through this and taking a look at it through there, I would imagine some of the classifications and not being, I don't know if every employee has a classification through their job description on it, but over a period of time, I'm sure those job descriptions change. If an employee is here long enough, they take on extra jobs and duties and what have you. So it doesn't really come to that position of having a description. As I can see it in the other part where you're talking about a step program, what does that do with the longevity? Does it take the longevity pay out or what?
So the step program would be a policy that you would put in place for year-over-year base pay increases. The council or city leadership could absolutely do anything they wanted with additional longevity pays or anything like that. The step structure looks at the base pay only. And so it's a recommendation just to adjust the salary that employees receive each year.
You know, when you look at this and you look at it overall, I think on, what page was it, two seventy-three, something like that, you're saying that just do this, it's about a two-point-eight million salary increase, base increase. And then the benefits roll up to about thirty percent, but the benefits are not included in the two-point-eight million that's being requested for this. You know, there's things that people need to understand and look at, and I'm sure most of them do setting up here that, you know, we got the two pots of money. One's the enterprise fund, water, wastewater, the other's the general fund. Right now, our general fund is, from what I can gather on there, is about sixty-five percent of that goes in salaries and benefits, wages and benefits in that. So we're getting to a point, you know, if we add this, and I'm sure if that comes in, then you're looking at in the budget process of going through with a two percent quota, which adds another million and a half to two million dollars to it. So you're looking at the salary and the benefits and all of the rest in it. About a four million dollar increase, you know, into this totally.
Well, I do want to mention, this number did include the two percent cost of living.
Well, it comes into the two percent. Okay, well, that's good. It didn't say that. But on there, so, you know, I've got some concerns on it. And because I think, you know, at this point in time, I think the employees and everybody else, and council especially, is going to have to take a look at it from a perspective of how much money that we got and what we're going to do with it. You know, we got the employees and the staff that are looking at one side of the spectrum. We're getting calls on daily of reducing the tax rate for this next budget year. And those sixty-five and under, they want to have a homestead exemption given to them. And so, you know, you got both sides of the pot wanting different things. And you got limited money, and that's exactly, you know, what you have. It's just limited through there. So that was a big concern, you know, that I really had on that. And, you know, it's very difficult decisions to be made on here. But I think, you know, at some point in time, you know, I think the council and the staff are going to have to pick and choose of what they can do and what they can't do. And I know the last time, I believe it was, I wasn't on council during that time, when they did the last study, it was on there. But it took two years in order to get it back up through there of what the total amount was. And that may be at some point in time, look at it, it's going to be, have to be spread through that if the council wants to go with that program as it is in here. So, you know, I, there's just a lot of concern about it right now. I don't know, police department, you know, talked about not being, you know, through that. We battled this over a period of years. You know, this is not the first thing about it. One time, the city manager, not this one we have here, but wanted to take away the step program in order to make additional funds to it. But I think a lot of things have been done and taken care of through there. But I think, you know, we're getting at a critical stage as it is right now. And we're really going to look at this to see, you know, what we can and what we can't do.
Okay, real quick, Joe, can you let me know if, remember Hernandez was able to get back on? With the presentation up, I can't see else who's online, so I just need to make sure.
He is online. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be brief, just to add to what Councilman Owens said. We can bring everybody up to what we think is fair and equitable. But there's only two ways to do that. First, we have to cuss services somewhere else. Secondly, we raise taxes. It's really the only two ways to achieve it, just so everybody understands that, which all the guys up here, I'm sure do. I have one question. What would be your response to the Police Officers Association that your survey is comparing apples to oranges by the mix of cities you've compared Pearland to versus their apples-to-apples comparison with this group of cities they've chosen?
Yeah, I definitely think there is, I understand where he's coming from. I think there's some validity to the comment that a comparison has been changed over the years. What I will say is, I guess a couple of comments in response to that is, number one, the scope of the study was not recreate the exact same study that was done last time. We were asked to look and find what we believe to be the market positioning of the city at this time. And so I can't speak to how the peers were selected last time or, you know, essentially, you know, are those the perfect peers for the city to compare with each time? I do feel very comfortable with the peers that we selected. And I do think this is a good representation of the market. The other thing that I will mention is, as far as keeping the same peers every single time, that does give you some consistency. And it does let you see essentially, how did we change versus those exact peers that we compared to? However, the market does not stand still. And so as you look at different cities, as you look at the services they offer, the population that they have, the amount of resources that they have, over the course of four years, should those cities all be the same? Maybe. Maybe there's not as much change, but over the course of, you know, any more years than that, I think you're going to see changes in the market. And so while there is certainly some rationale to keeping the same peers every single time, when we do this work all across the country and going to HR conventions, talking about best practices essentially, it is not the standard practice across the country to have the exact same peers every single time you do a study. And so I would say, yes, I understand the comment for sure. I don't think it's baseless. I think there is a certain point that can be made about that. But I do not think you have to use the same peers every single time. As long as you're using sound logic to select your peers, and as long as you believe you have a good representation of the market, I think there is some room to essentially update and see who do you want to compare to, to make sure that we're making an accurate comparison today and not a comparison that might have been accurate, you know, five, ten years ago that may not hold today.
Good comment. Remember Campa?
Yes. Staff, do we have the forty-six-page class and comp study that we can pull? I've got questions on context that I need guidance on. So while they're getting that teed up, Mr. Holcomb, first of all, thank you for coming all the way from Tallahassee. It is not the best time of the year to be here with all our storms, raging humidity, but thank you for coming out here. I just have questions. This is the first, we've had this circulating around, but you're kind of the expert here. So I just need context of kind of what's going on. Can we go to slide three-three, which is page twelve, into the council? Please forgive me, I just, I'm trying to get as much context because all of this data has a picture and we have to see the frame. So on page three-three, under exhibit three-A, there's a graphic kind of at the top. It's page twelve of the PDF. There's a comment here, and I'm going to read it. The minimum annual pay offered to any city employee is twenty thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars, while the maximum salary of any pay grade is a hundred and fifty-three thousand. I understand that. But you have a really interesting comment. It is important to note that the executives of the city don't have any published pay ranges, and therefore, they would not be bound by the restriction. To get context, is that normal, not to have executive pay ranges normally listed? Or is that market? Is that standard amongst across the country?
So by standard, is it what every single other peer does? No. But is it normal? Do you have peers all across the country in cities, counties, you know, et cetera, and other types of organizations that have pay structures like that? Yes.
I just, I just don't want to belabor it. I just try and get more context.
Absolutely.
The next page, which is page three-five, it's under exhibit three-B. There was this really interesting nugget. This is the page. Third line from the bottom, a total of six hundred and ten employees are compensated below their pay grade midpoint, which is seventy-five percent of all employees for the city. Is that normal to what you normally see?
Seventy-five percent is a little bit higher than we would normally see. You typically, there is some variation and some natural.
Agreed, but just at a high level, what would be?
I would say the typical number, if I had to pick one number, I might say sixty percent. So sixty, forty is normal. So this is not alarming, but it is higher than you would typically.
Fifteen percent, and we're just, we're trying to be broad here. I'm not trying to pin you down too far. Okay, so I just, I want to understand that. Page fifteen, which I believe is the next one. Where are police and fire in the grade? Because those are our biggest employees, and I understand this is raw data. But where would those folks be? Because it doesn't say their classification of their job. And I'm just trying to understand how you.
Is, and I'm sorry, it's much too far for me to see. But I believe there is, I think we did list the police officers with that civil service. It would be the grade that actually identifies them, so I believe it would be PO. Is there a police officer grade on there somewhere on that page of the next one?
Okay, okay, so it's the next page. Okay, cool.
Okay, and yeah, we had them listed by grade, not classification title. For the civil service, it actually functions as both. But for general employees, it'd be multiple classifications on the same grade.
On page three-ten or three-four, the compression analysis, I just kind of want to, this is the page, thank you. Two kinds of compression pay are observed. It's like the last two lines of this mid-paragraph. For a city of our size, what is the context? We're a growing city. We're kind of slowing down on that growth. We've had to add a lot of employees to give context for, when I started running in 2019, we had seven hundred and fifty employees. We're now, fast forward twenty-one months, and we're at eight hundred and fifty. So we're adding headcount. Where does us as a box, where does that normally, what are we seeing more of usually? Is it the compression, or is it the one where the tenure is not followed?
So more common in local governments would typically be the compression, which is the range compression. So employees not advancing quite as quickly as you would expect. That's what we saw here, and that's sort of what we talked about here. That is the more common type of compression. And, yeah, so to try to keep brief with that, I know we're asking quick questions. That is the more commonly seen type of compression would be the range compression that you're experiencing.
Page three-seventeen, it's in the summary, so just a couple of pages back. The third bullet, right here, more than half are in quartile one, the employees, fifty-six point four percent. What should that normally, that number be in a sampling across the country? What is the balance normally?
The balance there, again, is always going to be affected by things like tenure and turnover and things like that. But I would say a typical number would be probably thirty-five percent or so, give or take. Quartile one is going to have, it's going to capture all your turnover. So when you have new hires coming in, they're typically going to come in quartile one, so it's more than twenty-five percent. But I would say typically thirty-five percent or so would be what you'd normally see.
Okay, and then item four-point-one, which is page four-point-eight. This was really illustrative when I was going through this. Thank you. The three positions that are greater than ten percent of market minimum is animal control, budget officer, and financial analyst. Great job, Eric. You know, seventeen point four percent ahead of the market. And then who are ten percent above? We have paramedics, fire lieutenant, fire. I kind of understand that. We've just restarted a new fire department. So those people are not having the longer lifespan of having to do all those races. So I thought that was really illustrative. And then on page four-ten, which is two behind that, the Pearland positions greater than ten percent ahead of market maximums is firefighter, fire inspector, fire captain, and again, financial analyst, at seventeen point four percent, Eric. So this is just trying to understand where we are. The question I have for you is, is normally on the market maximums, minimums, is fire and public safety usually together? Or is usually one group different? Because I don't see police, anybody there on market minimums or maximums.
Well, I guess the context that I'll give that I think fire would certainly want to be mentioned here as well is when you see that, we're talking about the base pay only. So the minimum, the maximum, the actual structure. I think part of the reason that you see the fire ranges that are so different from the market is because the fire employees here do not have that step structure that the market has. And so you're essentially, if we want to talk about comparing apples to oranges, that's essentially, here's where it would come up when you're looking at an open-range pay plan versus a step structure. And so some of your peers have significantly different ranges when it comes to fire positions. They would have step structures that have a significantly shorter range, but that would be essentially more comparative to the midpoint of the fire structure. And so it's not to say, just from my familiarity with the data, certainly doesn't mean that the fire positions are all making near that maximum or above the market there. I would say this is. I would say this is probably more indicative of the difference in structure with the open-range versus the step structure than anything else.
I had a couple of questions then, off of the presentation. When was the JAT sent out?
I believe, I don't know the exact date, I believe it was last fall. Larray, do you remember a month or?
It was sent out December 2020.
December, okay.
Fourth quarter of 2020. And then, I guess, how many iterations of this are we seeing, like massaging? Because I just, there's so much data, and there's so much analysis, and I'm just trying to understand. We got this presented on late June, essentially mid-June. How many, how much back and forth has there been?
There, there has been a lot of back and forth, which is normal. You know, we've looked at a few different options and a few different things, so essentially we typically come forward, and that's the process that we use to make sure we're giving something to the city that they can use. So we typically come forward with our first set of recommendations, where we say, here are a number of things that we can look at. You know, do we feel like one of these matches the compensation philosophy of the city? Do we feel like one of these matches the financial resources that are available at the city? Do we feel like, and we try to narrow down to recommendations, again, that we feel like are very competitive with the market, but also recommendations that can be implemented and, and that will address the needs that the specific city has.
You, you said something really important there, and I, I just want to understand what your thoughts are on it. What is the compensation philosophy of the city right now, in your words?
I would say it's not as well-defined as, as maybe it, it could be. So I, I don't think there's a necessary, necessarily a philosophy that says, this is the way we're going to pay employees, and, and this is what it's going to look like.
Oh, I guess, let me ask this a little more directly. How would you characterize how we hire, retain, and pay people now? How would you, as a professional, say, how would you characterize it, I guess?
I think there's a little bit of, of room to, I guess, to, to match the market best practices. I don't think it's a bad system, but I think it lacks a little bit of uniformity. And so I think coming in with some recommendations to essentially address some of that, to, to set a hiring structure that would allow the city to apply the same methodology to everybody coming in, to have those market-competitive pay ranges, and then looking at the employees like, for example, the fire, who we know are significantly different than the market right now. I, I do think tweaks like that would certainly help the city be able to apply more, a more consistent methodology to all employees.
We have 75% below the midpoint, 610 employees. Would you say that that's by design, or would you say that from your astuteness, there just wasn't really guidelines, and people just ended up in that bucket?
I certainly can't speak to motivation or, or anything like that. I mean, we, we came in and we've looked and, and worked very closely with the city over the last, you know, six to eight to 12 months. So I can speak to, to what we've seen here, and I think the city has expressed, you know, from when we've been working with them, a, a desire to become market-competitive, and to make sure they're implementing best practices here. If we look back at the pros and cons list on the step structures in open range, you do see some of the issues that are, are occurring. We're in that cons list for the open-range structure. So you say by design, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what implication was meant or anything, you know, I, I don't know.
No, I just, is that Alex Campar philosophically, not even council members sees, people should be paid for performance, but we're not in a private sector environment?
Right.
And so I understand that you, they're not comparable, but what I would tell you is, what I hear from a lot of folks in the building, outside the building, is they don't really pay well. And then you get situations where it manifests, where we have this water bill issue, or we had somebody who's either unqualified or didn't care, and it cost us $6 million allegedly. You know, it cost us two or $3 million to get people paid correctly. There's a cost to hiring people who are not very good.
Right.
And, and I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what are you trying to tell us? And I guess what you're saying is, everybody needs a 2% bump, and we need to, we need to look at the strategy a little more. Is that kind of high level?
Yeah, I, I think this structure that we're recommending here would address the, the concerns that we've seen, and, and I have no background or context on the, the water bill issue that you mentioned, but there certainly is a cost to hiring employees that, that you otherwise might not have. And so this will allow you, I think, to be as, as market-competitive as possible. I do think this would be a step in the right direction in, in ensuring that the city of Pearland has the employees that can provide top-level service.
And I'm going to, I'm going to wrap my part up. And you said something about the good employees and the bad employees are more or less compensated the same. There, there's not a differentiation in person has a very good review and good year, a person who has a mediocre year or bad year, they more or less, if you're on that trajectory, you stay on that trajectory. Is that correct?
So in the implementation that we recommend, it is a one-time adjustment, that, that again, could be looked at again later if you wanted to. In that adjustment, it does not factor in performance at all. One thing that we have discussed and, and talked about with leadership as well as with HR, is how performance could be implemented with each of these systems. And so just to make sure I'm, I'm being clear, with a step structure, you typically wouldn't say, you have high performance, you get, you know, 3% step, and you get a 2% step, you know, that, that's not a step structure. But we would recommend and are going to talk to, you know, talk to the city about for implementation, a policy in place where you would have to meet certain parameters to receive the step, to ensure that you're performing at least up to a satisfactory level.
And then lastly, and I'm going to pass it along, the fire folks came and talked about their issues with compression. We've heard from the police folks that they don't feel that the comps are probably representative. How hard would it be for us to take a step back for a week or two and get maybe some more representative comps from a procedural and process point of view? Is that difficult to do?
I guess it depends on what level of, of detail we'd want to be looking at and, and how we'd want to look, but if, if you're talking about collecting pay plans and, and essentially looking at a comparison of, of the base pay structures between police, that's not something that would take too much time.
I thank the, the council for giving me the patience to ask all these questions. My ask would be that we take a step back, maybe a week or two, to get some more representative comps. The Woodlands Township isn't even a real city technically, and they're one of your, your comps. You have several college towns like College Station and Baylor, who are different ecosystems, different talent pool. I, we have UHCL Pearland, it's not the same. And so I, I think we probably do need to, to look at what we're comparing against.
It's a fair, fair comment. And, and, and this is our first time to really dive into this, so I, you know, obviously if you've got questions about the whole plan, I mean, this is the time to, to ask and, and get our expert who put it together to, to answer the questions, so I, I appreciate that. Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess back to some of the public comments, and, I mean, I heard your explanation on, on why the change, but the fact that we only used four out of the 10 from the last study, I mean, it does feel like the goalpost is being moved. And then is there, is there a specific reason why League City wasn't included?
I believe if we go back and look at the list, I'm not sure that they weren't included. I believe they did not respond, is, is the, the comment that was made to the police position. I believe they did not respond on their survey and provide that data for the police position. We can certainly, as, as we go back out and take a look for more data, I, I, we would be happy to reach out to them to see if we can get that comparison for the first-line police officer.
And all this public data anyway?
Excuse me?
Is it all this public record?
We can certainly reach out and get that from them.
Yeah, okay. And I, I agree with Councilman Campar, let's, let's step back and, and make sure we get this right. And I guess a question for staff, I think earlier Councilman Campar said there was, kind of implied we, we added 100 headcount over the past two years, and that doesn't seem right. I know we hired some firefighters, but, but not that many.
We'd have to go back and look at that. I mean, we did staff up for eight, Station Eight, you'll recall, so, you know, it was substantial. That might have been 25, 30 off the top of my head, so, right there.
I just remember the, the edification, when I started running, the headcount was in the sevens, and now we're in the mid-eights. It might be 775 or 750, but it just, it has moved enough that we crossed into the 800.
Right, yep. All right, thank you.
Member Orlando?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I, I appreciate the discussion around the, the comps that were used as it pertains to some of our public safety positions. And I, I guess I appreciate from your perspective that it's not your job to go and recreate that study, but I also sympathize, as has been mentioned multiple times, that just, if you're sitting here and, and kind of wondering how this is going as a city employee, it, it would feel unfair. And so I, I agree, I think that Pearland should continue to advance, and, and we don't want to be comparing ourselves to the same cities 10 or 20 years from now as we are today, but, yeah, I, I appreciate the acknowledgement of that concern, that when you move the goalposts like that, it, it just can result in some kind of bad blood. So I, I don't think that's something from your end, I think maybe that's something that we kind of discuss internally, of what's the right mix of keeping that continuity, but also appreciating that we want to continue to grow as a city and, and become a better city relative to our peers, and until we're, you know, the, the best that we can be in our, our class and truly the community of choice. So I, I appreciate that, and, and, you know, appreciate the comments of members, Carbone and Campar as well, and want to make sure we get this right. Also, just wanted to make a quick note, I, I don't try to call people out usually and embarrass them, but some of the members that were kind of spotlighted at for what, what was gone in the study, I've gotten the chance to personally work with them and think that they're worth every penny. So I, I think that's all I had there. Let me see what else, I, we've been on this for a while. Again, yeah, if, if we can just spend a little bit of time on this, make sure we get it right, especially as it pertains to some of the issues that have been raised, and then maybe going forward, just, I, I think a lot of this is about communication and, and setting the right expectations, and if there's this expectation, as was expressed, hey, this is this baseline that we're establishing, and then we, we go and do something else, and it's, it's going to happen. We up here turn over, we have city staff that turns over, so sometimes it, it's hard to make good and follow through on what those commitments and expectations are, but after doing this, just maybe kind of doing a better job of communicating that and setting the expectation going forward, I think would make everybody's lives a little bit easier and be greatly appreciated by our city staff, certainly. Appreciate the, all the detail tonight.
Good comments. Member Hernandez?
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm glad that it was brought forward, that I guess we're going to go back to staff and look at ways that, I guess, we could differentiate between eligible positions for performance versus the step. I think there's appropriate, I guess, conversation that they have taken place around some of the, the performance base, but I don't know that it's really been explored to the level of which position. So for instance, you know, we're not going to pay our fire employees based on how many fires we're putting out, things like that, or how quickly they're putting out, or how quickly they inspect a business, or something like that. So I think kind of getting that differentiation a little bit more drilled down, the step versus performance would be something good that I would like to explore a little bit more. So taking, taking a step back, I already agree with some of the other comments that have already been made, but I don't want to belabor anything, lots has been said, and I agree with a lot of it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it is important that we make sure that we keep some consistency in some regards from, from survey or study to study. Certainly understand, sometimes you have to just break it apart and, and look at it more comprehensively. I think this is a comprehensive study, and I think it's, it's, it's telling, it's challenging. Certainly as a city, as been noted, some 65 or 70% of our, you know, total budget is, is around people. And I'll, I'll, I'll say, you know, complaints or attaboys and all of that out in the community, back to us, I mean, it, it involves our, our people. And, and so certainly, we want to, we want to make sure that we're attracting the best possibly, possible people that we can. This isn't unlike a lot of businesses. I mean, they, if they have good employees, they want to keep them. They want to attract good employees, and so it's really no different than, than the private sector from that standpoint. But I think it would be our, to our advantage to take us a week or two step back and just study and look at some of those that were left out, just to make sure that we're, does it skew the results? Does it change it? Does it do anything in that direction? And we can, we can certainly note that. I think it also is in our best interest with, with respect to fire, to have that conversation about step sooner rather than later. I think at this point, we need to have that discussion, and then where and how, you know, ultimately it gets implemented. I think that's, you know, maybe for further discussion, but I think it's important that we, that we have the discussion with them. And we, we spent a lot of money in the last, what, chief, eight years, really pushing the envelope and, and, and building a, a full-time, you know, fire staff. So we, we certainly want to, you know, keep, keep good firefighters and EMTs on the ground working for us, and so I think it's our, it's our advantage to get out in front of, of that step a little bit and have a conversation. And where it ultimately leads, we've got to come back and, and wrestle with, but I think that's, it would be good to have that conversation. And I'll, I'll throw it back to the council. Member Campar?
Yeah, just real quickly, for the folks on the police side, would two or three weeks be amenable, maybe looking at more data? I know you guys have a legitimate comment, that'd be amenable to what you guys are trying to do. All right, that'll work for me. And then one thing for, for Mark, you guys started sending this out in 2020, the end of 2020. The analysis on pay, we're, we're seeing massive inflation starting to happen. I can't go on the USA Today without hearing Dr. Gamble's up 3% on their toilet products, and, you know, Kimberly Clark is up, and milk is up, everything is up, and everybody feels it when we go to the grocery store. On the data, on where we are on cost of a living and some of these items, when is that tabulated? Is that going back to December of '20, or is that more, I would say, present?
Closer to today.
So the cost of living data is actually polled every quarter, and so we did, that probably would have been from fourth quarter 2020. One thing I will mention is, with every contract that we sign, from the conclusion of the contract, we do have one year of free maintenance for the city. And so that includes questions such as, you know, can you take a look at the cost of living and recommend any, you know, updates to the plan overall, and kind of questions like that?
I would, I would beg the, the staff and, and the team to take another look at that. We're pumping $6 trillion in at the federal level. Everything is, is going up. My wife tells me it's going up. I think everybody knows that. And the reality is, is our city workers live on a budget many times, and, and they're hard-working folks, and they deserve to be able to go out to dinner, go to vacation, get what they want at the grocery store. And so I'm sympathetic that if we're going to do a one-time bump, and we're going to do all the things that we need to do to get right, that we do it with the current circumstances that we're going to be dealing with now with more inflation, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make one quick comment, because I, I think this is really important. We spend a lot of time up here sometimes talking about smaller ball stuff, but this salaries and wages are something that we spend 71% of our budget on, so, I mean, this is, this is our budget in a lot of ways. And we're looking, if I recall the analysis correctly, when you're looking at the, if you're looking at the, the final number that was shown, you know, 7.9% behind some of our peers, we've heard discussions that some folks might actually feel that they're, they're more behind than that even than what's reflected in that number. And this is, again, 71% of the budget, on top of a number we all know up here, we need about $5.5 million more for our streets and sidewalks, just to keep them at the exact same level they're at, not to improve them. And also, as we discussed recently, we, we have drainage projects for days just to keep water out of people's homes, probably in the order of hundreds of millions of dollars in, in drainage projects. So I think this is just a, a good time, as we're talking about something that represents 71% of our budget, to anchor and, and say, hey, when, when we're talking about what the real picture looks like, and I know we have candidates out there running for city council, we have people up here who, we, we have rhetoric on this, I, I think it's just important to realize, like, these are the, this is the, these are the options that are being dealt by, by our budget. We don't have a, a ton of flexibility, and so all the choices that are being made, and the three levers we're talking about are within the constraints of this environment. And so, again, I'll, I'll say what I said last time, there's not a magical money pit, there's a lot of very important things that we have, we, we need to be spending money on, and it, that can be hard, and, you know, I, that's, I just want to start by acknowledging that that's hard, and, and we can go from there. But appreciate all the discussion on this tonight.
Good comment. Just back to Clay, I think, just making sure, do you guys have direction? I know this is an input and discussion item, so.
Direction's probably too strong, but I think a lot of good questions, and, and as has been said several times, it's very important. I remember we did this four years ago, it was around Harvey, it was, you know, it's just complex, and there's lots of variables and factors, and, you know, at that time, we had recommended, at that time, for the next budget to go to the, I think, 75% of market, and council was supportive and said, let's do 100 at that time, but we'll, you know, what it was said, we've got to balance all these things, budgets, and we do that every time. I do hope that we can bring you some, in a subsequent meeting, some follow-up information materials, and we can maybe move towards some indications of where we're going to be together, because if we don't get something like that, then, you know, we're trying to balance a budget, and we're way off, it's just going to make budget season. we're way off, it's just going to make budget season, you know, impossible. I will clarify that, you know, on the steps, I'm very interested in that. I think there's a lot of pros that you heard that outweigh the cons. And I would suggest that we need to look at that towards all the non-exempt and not just fire. Those are positions that don't, you know, they need a progression, in my understanding. And I think we do have, with the additions and the growth, we've got a workforce that I'm not surprised is below the midpoint as an average, because we've added people and they have had a chance to move there. But we've done that without having steps and getting people to a natural progression, which that step system does provide. So we'll do some more work and follow back up, and then put this back on. And unfortunate thing is, we're going to be in July pretty quick, and then budget comes to you in August, and we're off and running. So we'll see what happens here.
So does this ultimately, are you looking for, not tonight, obviously, because it's not an action item? Is this an action item that you're going to be looking?
No, I think if we brought it back to you, and we could get a consensus that, hey, we're comfortable with, you know, the peers, and get some more meat on that, and then the step particularly. And then the other things I'm interested in is the bilingual certification for the positions we need, and costing that out, and then the some level, I don't think we'll be able to get to this point, frankly, next four weeks, but the certifications, other certifications, those are the things that are, come up a lot, and I think we're lacking.
Okay. Sounds like we at least have some direction, and we'll be waiting to see and hear, you know, as that moves, you know, back to us. Mr. Holcomb, thank you. Thank you for your comprehensive report. Thank you for your comments, your presentation tonight. Wish you traveling safety back to Tallahassee as well. So, but we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving forward, in our agenda, we'll move to new business item number six. Where did I leave off? Did you present the last one, or did, I think Adrian did. Member Cam Carr, would you present new business item number six, please?
Consideration, possible action, resolution R2020-144. So moved.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second staff report.
So the city has adopted financial policies that we adhere to and guides our workings day-to-day. We do look at those for updates, and we have two of those. One of those is to bring in, from what was a separate resolution in the past, the audit committee and the charge of that, and bring it into the financial policy, so it's in one place. And we floated this and shared that to the audit committee as well as yourselves. And the other piece is, council has asked for some tightening of the use of certificate of obligation instruments. And so that language has also been prepared and circulated earlier, and it's for your consideration here to add to the overall financial policies or not. Nothing to add.
All right. Moving forward to staff, or excuse me, council comments, questions, concerns? Anybody got anything?
I've just loudmouthed. I'm going to be real brief. Can we pull up the memorandum that was part of this packet item? I just kind of want to understand where we're trying to go, because the comments made in February around CO use, and just for the public benefit, a CO's certificate of obligation is debt that is not voted on by the voters. Is that correct, Mr. Jefferson? I apologize for catching off guard. That CO debt is not voted on by the voters, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the issue that I have with that is, we're starting to use more and more, as was provided, we're using we're using north of about $50 million in CO debt that doesn't go to the voters. It's being used for different items, some of them roof repairs, some of them items that are not long-term, and in some cases are long-term. And we, the justifications that we use, the barn door is wide open. I gave some of my council members here what some of the comments were to that, and I just wanted to kind of tighten up what we're trying to do. Eric worked really hard on this document, and so I'd like to scroll down a little further to kind of what the amended policy would be.
So I think you're probably looking at page 18 of 48 on the item that I'm looking at. It's
There you go. There you go. Can we scroll down to the next page? The biggest thing for me is, item number C here, is the second to the last paragraph from the bottom, "The city may issue COs for projects, and the city can leverage dollars from sources outside the general fund." So I guess this would be state dollars, Clay, federal dollars, just dollars that are not city Pearland dollars, is that correct?
Correct.
And I just, I'd like to quantify what is the parameter there? Is it $1 Pearland dollars gets $1 of somebody else's dollar? Is it $2 or $3? Because we're going to end up issuing debt that has a low interest rate, and I want us to get the bang for the buck for the taxpayer. And right now, this just says kind of anything. If we get $2 for every Pearland dollar, okay, I'm all right. But if we get three, that starts to be a credit, especially if it's dollars from outside our city. And so that's kind of one of the things, can we put a guideline here? In some instances, with Hurricane Harvey and flood mitigation, they were able to negotiate with the federal government a nine to one. So we put in a dollar, and the federal government, as part of Harvey and GLO mitigation, would give you $9. That is a good dollar for Pearland to spend. If we're getting $9, and I'm putting in $1, we should do that. If we're getting one to one, I don't know how I feel about that. I feel okay. I don't feel great about it. And I really would like to tighten that up. At the end of the day, this is about protecting the taxpayer. And then if you scroll down to the next page, item E, and D and E, I'll read this, it's thin typed in blue, "The city may issue COs for projects to be determined to be in the best interest of the city, whereby determinations made by the city council at the financial costs or timing of the construction of capital improvement, and expense of calling a bond for a single proposition with the approval of council warrant the issuance." There's no, what is the best interest of the city? Some people may say a dog facility, some people may say sidewalks, some people may say our mass transit, you know, bus stops. I don't know what they would say, but I need more parameters than, let's use item D in our clarification of what do we want to do. Item E, "The city may issue COs if, in the opinion of city council, it would be significantly more economical to the city to issue certificates of obligation than issuing revenue bonds." For the benefit of the public, every time we come here, they go say, go to the bond market, because we're getting crazy low rates, this is economical. Everything is economical in this rate environment. We need to put more guidelines here. And I'm open to that discussion. I just, these are the things that, if we're going to actually change the policy, it has to be something that can be directive, not just when do we decide it's the best interest of the city. We put a defined term on what that is, Eric. I don't, that's, those are my concerns.
So let me, Eric's welcome to jump in, but, you know, this is the council's policy, and obviously your parameters, and what you alluded to in terms of, I'll go to the leveraging point. Yes, if you wanted to put something in there, it's just hard to say, you know, you've got a policy for a reason. But, you know, it runs the gamut in those, and so you could have it that the council each time is going to have a discussion at CIP and budget as to whether that meets the council's policy threshold or not. You know, and obviously, this is a policy that could be changed or not adhered to, and there's no consequences, but this does provide some guidance. If you wanted to say it's got to be a three to one or five to one, and make that there, that we can go through that, and that would help from that standpoint of having some certainty. But I just don't know that, you know, everybody's going to have a different opinion about one for one, or what you said.
Yeah, I just, and on that, I think it's, I think it warrants having the discussion, certainly. And I think at some point, we may have to have that discussion about, at what point is the leveraging, you know, okay to go with COs? And the reason I bring that up, I'll, we'll talk about roadway projects where, with text dot, something that goes through the tip, generally speaking, and I want to make sure that people understand, generally speaking, it's usually an 80/20 match, so that's four to one. But by the time the project actually gets let and everything else, it's not four to one anymore, and it's, and it's closer to one to one, or two to one, or something of that nature. And so, but yet, we were planning to do COs, and now the, now that it's out there, the match is ready to go, and now what do we do? And so if we craft something like that, which I think is good policy, but what happens, and that happens quite often with, especially our road projects, so there's either scope creep, or cost creep, or both, it just kind of happens through the, and some of that scope creep's not us. That's, you know, federal government, state government, you know.
We've got the inflation on the cost, which is what we're having now, where PVC pipe has gone up, and materials have gone up. My ask to the members of the council is this, can we, if we're going to go through the brain damage of revising this, and we talked about this, the barn door was too wide open, you could do a CO for whatever reason, more or less, let's be good stewards to the taxpayer, and at least say, at the outset, maybe three to one is reasonable. If you go scroll to item F, which is at the bottom, no, it's right there, sorry. "The city may issue COs for the advanced design of projects to get them, quote, 'shovel-ready', and accurately determine the future financing bond amount, including the pre-work for designing GO or general obligation bonds." That makes sense to me. You can't have a project that you don't know what you're doing, you have to do a certain amount of pre-work. I can get there. But some of these other ones, the barn door is just too wide open, and I would just love to hear what the other council members think of, what do we define as the best interest of the city? What does that mean? What is a good dollar that we're financing, as opposed to just doing what we're doing now?
Yeah, I would say, first, I think this is a, this tightens up the criteria, and I'm grateful for that and appreciative of that. I would say, if we want to, if we want to tweak or tighten further, I think that's fine, and I would be open to hearing that kind of language, and if there's an amendment, happy to consider and vote on that. On the matching part specifically, I hear a lot up here, and just in the broader discourse, that, you know, we need to run the city more like a business. And maybe I should have our budget guy tell us this, but the, you know, the rate that people are getting back on bonds, are getting 2% or 3% back on bonds, the long-term rate in the S&amp;P 500 is 8%, 9%. Any business that had the opportunity to get 100% ROI on something, they're going to spend $1 and get a dollar back on that, I mean, that's, that's pretty huge. And so I don't know what the specific thing is, I'm open to that conversation. I don't think at this meeting right now, I would be comfortable saying, you know, if we're going to spend a dollar, and we're going to get an additional dollar to match that, I don't know that, right now, without any further consideration, I would want to restrict that, but certainly open to having the conversation. But yeah, appreciate the effort to tighten these up. I think that this is going to be a good step in the right direction in terms of shoring up people's understanding and people's confidence that these instruments are being used in a responsible way.
Just an idea, if you're open to it, Mr. Cam Carr, I don't know if this is going to go to where you want, but I maybe, as a starter, to express, and when the council gets the information about that, for there to be an expression of the payback ratio, so that that's clear. I think we've kind of inferred that and just built it in, and I don't think we've necessarily bragged about that, like the mayor just said with his numbers. So, you know, if you wanted to, we could just make that part of the policy, and I'm not trying to water it down too much, but that might give you a flavor for, and then you'll get a, you know that most of them are three to one, six to one, wherever it is, before we get too far into going.
And here's the thing, we're going to use COs in the future. I'm not saying we're not going to do that. It's just the quote of when something comes before the budget, this complies with the financial policy, it complies with all the rules, and then we kind of all go to sleep here, and that's kind of the reality of what happens. But, you know, is the policy good? And I think the policy could be better. I'm not saying that it's not improved from here, it's just I want somebody to know that if we're doing a CO, we're at least getting what we think is three to one in our money, because we're going to pay the interest on it, and that it's going to go to a project that will actually help somebody. You know, it's going to go to a capital project where it's shovel-ready, we need to do the project, and we just need the pot of money, and it's 2% money. I don't want to hand tie us too much, but I just want the guidelines to be a little more detailed. You know, I really appreciate the team getting us to where we are, that they're being explicit. You know, HAC enterprise funds, federal or state, they're diagnosing it, but I want the voters and the citizens to know that if we do go get a dollar of debt, we're getting a good deal.
What if we looked at scratching through both D and E on that page 20? That's the big ambiguity. In terms of putting down a ratio, I don't, I mean, it's going to be kind of arbitrary. I'm fine with that, but I mean, scratching D and E, that takes the term, the opinion of, and significantly more economical to the city, and it takes some of that out. And then, like Pearson said, you know, having that ratio on there so we're aware of it, because, I mean, to Luke's point, there's a cost. I mean, when we get Fed funds, and we have to jump through so many hoops, if it's just a dollar for dollar, sometimes we don't want that dollar. So, you know, I think being aware of that ratio would help, but I'd be in favor of scratching D and E at the top of page 20, just to tighten down a little bit.
And for the, people can't see scrolling up on this, but the original language was, "The city on item D, the city may issue COs for projects when there is no other adequate funding source available." That's as wide a door as you can get. We don't have any money, let's pull out the certificate of obligation credit card and go to town. We're trying to put at least a guardrail here. And in that respect, this is an improvement, but I just think we need to be more definitive of where we're going. And that's not to say that this can't change, or you can't override the policy in the future for a need, but I just, Mayor, you make a great point, I didn't even think about that. Scope creep happens, cost creep happens, you have a 15-year project you started spending on, and the scope changed, and all of a sudden, that value went away, but we win in that with the best of intentions.
Well, and I think along those lines, I know sometimes we will do COs, because it's, well, we've done them on all of our fire stations, as an example. Well, I shouldn't say all, there may be a fire station or two that we voted on by the people, but most, you know, recently, some of our COs have been done on fire stations. I think of some of these projects, you know, why not put them out to the voter? We should, we shouldn't be afraid to take things like that to the voter. Where I think we have to be careful and utilize a CO is literally when the timing of when the money is needed, it's really not in our hands. And it's, these projects take a while, and all of a sudden, there's money available. We've seen it where, I go back many years now, actually, we had some, quote, shovel-ready product, we really did, we had them engineering in the can, we had them ready to go, and projects came through the state and the feds, and we actually had projects ready to go, but they happened overnight. I say overnight, we got the notice that we're ready to go to projects, so we had to demonstrate, we had our match, you know, pretty quick. And so, you know, gearing up and going to the voters in those types of situations were very difficult, so a CO gets used. And I don't know how we do that and necessarily change this, I think this is a good step. I agree, can we make it better? We're already breaking it open, we might as well have this conversation, you know, breaking it open. Even if we don't solve something tonight, maybe we come back in July and do it.
Here's some context, just for the record, I'm a development professional, I do not do work in Pearland, but I do work in Conroe. And so just to give you some real-life experience, the city of Conroe does not issue GO debt, it won't vote on it. All the debt they ever do is certificates of obligation. And the reason they do that is so they can take the certificate of obligation credit card and never go to the voters. That's a legitimate policy. You go ask the staff, we don't issue GO debt. They literally will tell you that straight away. And that is to avoid the voters. Now, let me give you an example in Conroe, where I'm doing the business, they're doing a great job, but they have water lines on the west side of town where they don't have enough PSI to serve you. Well, there's always so much CO debt you can keep doing, but when you need that $9 million water plant, wouldn't it have been really great to just gone and done the bond, and then the people say, well, I can't get water, I would, I'll go ahead and vote for water? You know, there's certain points where you do need to do the GOs. But, you know, for one city that only goes to COs, and they're struggling with the growth, and it's not enough, at some point, you do have to saddle up and go to the voters. And for me, Mayor, I just want the voters to be able to have the chance to vote. Let the people speak, they know when it's too tight or too much, and they know when it's not. And I just, for me, I want to say that we're going to use COs, but that we've improved the guideline a little bit.
Yeah, I just want to add something, just because I've heard it come up a lot tonight, and I've heard it come up at a lot of other times, and maybe it's kind of an uncomfortable conversation, but I think there's this idea in what we're talking about, that CO debt is like about that CO debt is like this dirty thing, that CO debt is not approved by the voters and therefore, you know, we, we've had this conversation. I've made the point over and over again, you know, we, we all are aware that we have very finite resources and we have infinite needs of, of things we could do to, you know, better support our first responders, to better support folkses, you know, who are flooding, um, in any, our streets and sidewalks, any number of other priorities. So there's this idea that CO debt is bad, but it's okay. It's, it's fine if it's GO debt and it goes to the voters. But I've heard people up here on this dais say, I'm not going to raise taxes come hell or high water. And so there's, we, we go and put these GO bonds out and we, we put in the newspaper, this is what you're voting on. If it is approved, taxes will need to go up this much to pay for it. And so what member Campcar is articulating and what I agree with is, um, voters know, voters can make the, the choice. Is this worth that tax increase? And, and I, I think that's a fair question to ask then. And it might be, you know, this is really important. This project is really important, but it's not important enough that I can afford to shoulder this burden of an additional tax increase. But then what I hear up here, I, I was here in 2019, my election was at the same time as a bond referendum, and we said we're going to raise taxes by three and a half percent. And we come up in that budget and say, we're going to raise taxes three percent. And we have a bunch of guys say, no, 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 we, we can't raise taxes. So I, I'm left in this position of being like, like this plus frustrating position of like, oh, well, we have these important things, but we have this way that's, that's kosher to pay for them. And it's called sending it to the voters. But then we get to the hard situation of actually having to pay for the projects and people are not willing to do that. I never want to see people's taxes go up. But the idea here is that there are some times where the worst thing in the world might not be a tax increase. It might be that you can't pay for some of this other stuff and we're going to let the voters decide rather than us. I guess what I'm saying is I don't always see the follow-through there. And we're having this discussion like, oh, well, we can send some, some stuff to GO and we're going to restrict the CO. I agree. Let's, let's restrict the CO. I just want to see the follow-through that we actually believe that GO debt and we actually do trust what the people say in order to pay for our numerous spending priorities. So.
And there, there's some good talking points in there, but we've got a debt fund and a general fund. And there's never been pushback on raising the debt service fund. I mean legally, we can't raise it or lower it. It's got to be what, what cash flow do we need to service the debt? Um, so I guess just don't want to confuse those two issues when we talk about the, the general fund and the debt service fund.
Uh, but to most people, that's of, of course the case. Most people see the tax rate, the, the bill that they get, which is the sum of those two things. And if it goes up, nobody here wants to vote for, for that going up. So that's at least been my experience and, and just what I wanted to, uh, opine on. So thank you, Mayor.
I just want to give one, one example. There was a city down further in Missouri County, remain nameless, that, uh, a water line had low PSI. And it was a very relatively small city, but they did not want to spend the $2.2 million to do the emergency repair to get the pressure up. Uh, and it got a child sick. That child had to go to hospital. The pressure, because it was too low, let bacteria grow. And at some point, there's a public safety aspect. We don't want people to get sick drinking our water. So there was a time and a place to use the CO. And believe it or not, that city council did not approve the CO and said, we'll push it to May and the kid got sick in February. That, that's not what this is going to cover here. That the, we, if there's an emergency repair, um, emergencies called by weather, climate, economic disasters, we will spend the dollars because we're not going to make people sick. Um, but there's a reasonableness factor. And, and what I'm just trying to move us to is what does that reasonable box look like? Um, and I'm, I'm really impressed. The, the staff did a great job on the transparency piece. I agree with almost all the recommendations on transparency piece. Um, but I think we need to keep hacking away on what, what is going to be the, the threshold.
Yes, quickly, Mayor. Um, well, I agree, we should let the voters decide as often as we can what debt the city should incur because they're the ones paying for it. Uh, at times these COs make sense, but one thing we don't want to lose sight of is that city council has to approve these things. So at the time they're issued, we vote on them. And there's no credit card. You just, city just runs down there and incurs more COs. It's got to come to us first and we decide at that time, is it in the best interest of the city?
Right.
So it's not an open credit card to run, incur obligations. So I just want to make that clear for the public.
And, and to that point, I, I, that's a, that's a good point. Remember a little, uh, you know, we had a CIP discussion two, two Saturdays ago. And, and in that discussion was here's, um, property tax-backed, uh, capital improvements. And then here's our enterprise, you know, backed. And of course over here, uh, here's what is GO and, and was actually voted on. And then here's CO that we're planning. And to your point, that comes to us to approve. And so that was a workshop. That'll ultimately be in a budget. And then it's ultimately part of the budget document where we're saying, you know, we're, we're going to spend the COs on it. Um, but I, but also think, you know, it's, it's noted when you have an emergency and it's a true emergency, sometimes you gotta do the right thing and take care of your folks. And that's, you know, a lot of people carry a credit card for the emergency. And that's when you should use it. Um, so yeah, you just have to be responsible with it. And, and I think, I think, again, I think this is tightening it up. I think it's in the right first step and hope to improve it. Rollins?
Yeah, I think, you know, I've probably been most critical on COs anybody sits up here on that. I think some of the, you know, the recommendations of staff is a good, good, uh, starting point. Uh, the other side of the coin is too, you know, if, if something is coming out, there's matching money that's with it where it's 10%, 20% and we can get it done now rather than five years down the road, you know, then it's back here for us to make that decision, uh, on that to be able to do it. And I think, you know, you know, we, we've even done the same thing with, uh, GOs bonds when we'd go out and sell it. Well, what we wanted to do in the beginning, we'd do a PER and we'd take it out of COs in order to do the PER to make sure we get dollar amount good. Uh, you know, when we'd go out for the GOs, uh, for, uh, approval. So I think, you know, certain times, uh, you need it, certain times you don't. And I think it's up to us as council members to watch those times. And I mean, from what I see right here, there's, you know, and it's a lot of it's limited on by state law, what you can and can't use it for. But I think any of the things that, you know, that, uh, staff would bring it up here for the council to make that decision on it, that this is what we're going to use. And that'd be up to us to make that decision where, uh, it, where it should be or shouldn't be. So I think ultimately, you know, using COs is okay in some areas. I, I think, you know, we've been, uh, and I have too, been pretty critical on those, uh, of using those. I think, you know, we, we, uh, the certificates obligation, it's, you know, they bounced up, we're using quite a few. And for the dollar amount. So I think, you know, the rec- as part of it, uh, then we have to look at it from the point, okay, within, you know, do we go ahead and, and get these projects started and use COs to get it started? Or do we need to delay it to another point in time? And I think a lot of the staff recommendations here allows that responsibility setting up here with the mayor and seven council members to make that decision.
Hang on, we may have lost our quorum.
Yes.
Darren, I believe we lost our quorum.
Yeah.
No, he's not.
No, he's not.
No. Yep. We, and, and just for the public, Mr., yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on. All right.
Mayor, if I could, uh, you know, this, uh, discussion came out of, uh, February when we looked at the, uh, financial policies as we always do. And, and so this is the fault of that. Uh, I heard suggestion of dropping D and E and perhaps, uh, on C Charlie after the end of that perenns, maybe adding, um, uh, with, with the ratios of leveraged funds to be specifically, uh, described to reduce blah, blah, blah. And then, uh, you know, if council is so inclined, we could with those edits like that, um, you know, then adopt this and, and frankly, you know, bring it back. And we'll be back in February as we do with financial policies and, and you can have a, see how that's worked for you and felt, and then go from there. So I just don't know frankly, that we need revisiting this like three times, the next meetings with everything else going on. It's not going to change a lot frankly, from where we're adopting the CIP in the budget, but leave it to you.
Well, certainly entertain a amendment if, if the council is inclined.
I'd like to make a motion to amend item C of the revision.
Be more specific on which C, multiple Cs.
Sorry.
No, you're just page of the actual report, like page 13.
Uh, page four, page 14 of the comment, commented, uh, financial policy.
See the city, well, the city may issue COs for projects with.
Page 19 of 48 up, page 14 of the policy.
Um, I'd like to make an amendment, um, with a goal to achieve a three to one match for every Pearland dollar. Three to one. Three, three outside dollars for every.
One dollar we put in.
One dollar Pearland.
I know we had a motion and, but not a second yet. So I just wanted to ask before.
I think he's, I think he's putting.
Multiple. Well, will we have a chance to discuss that before we, okay?
Uh, I, let me, let me clarify. I'd like to make a motion to amend item C, uh, on page 14 of the city's Pearland comprehensive financial management policies, uh, to tack on the end of C with a goal to achieve a three dollars, three outside dollars for every Pearland, uh, certificate of obligation dollar.
A three to one ratio. For every dollar we put up, we get three back.
With the goal of at least.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All right. Questions, comments, discussions on the amendment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, uh, it sounded like what the city manager was saying and what we were hearing is that we already have a kind of metric and they were going to add that and bring it back. I, we've all been here a long time. Maybe I'm missing something or getting a little sleepy, but is that what was said? I just want, it, it sounds like we're, we already kind of have something and we're.
Just to clarify, you're, we don't have, uh, we haven't, we've.
An informal.
But we haven't like, right, we haven't said this is a three to one ratio.
Right.
So it's, I think that's a decent, that's a good suggestion. But what member Campcar was suggesting was to actually put.
modify.
Yeah, goal, goal in there. And then it was a, a goal. So, you know, I think it does kind of the same thing.
I'm trying to be generous here.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to be generous.
Okay, uh, that explains it for me. Thank you.
So any other questions, comments on the amendment? All right, seeing none. Um, Madam Secretary, we are voting on an amendment to, uh, the document in front of us, page, make sure I get it right, page 14, where it says the city may issue COs for projects when the city can leverage dollars, dot, 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 to add, uh, the language, uh, that the city would drive, or the city would achieve a three to one ratio for every one dollar we put in, three dollars comes back, is what that means.
With a, with a goal to achieve.
Goal.
A three to, a three, three dollars for every.
One dollar.
Pearland CO dollar.
Right. Okay. Was there another amendment besides the C?
I didn't have any on that. Now, Carbone, if you want to go take D and.
Well, let's take them one at a time.
All right.
Since we have a motion, a second on that. So we have a motion, a second that clarifies it. Did that clarify it for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So we'll call for the vote on the amendment.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez, is he, has he come back?
He's offline.
He's offline. Member Little?
No.
Member Owens?
I'll go, I'll go with a yes.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have an amended motion or excuse me, an amended document to, um, now consider, are there any other amendments? Seeing or hearing none? All right. So we're now voting on the amended motion. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Secretary, now we're voting on the amended motion.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one to adopt resolution R 2020 dash one four four as amended.
All right, moving forward. And just for the record, uh, Member Hernandez is actually, has been on a flight.
Oh.
And so there was a point where he had, uh, he had to get offline. He's heading to a conference for work. So, all right, moving, uh, new, new business item number seven. Member Campcar, could you present that please? Or did you just present the?
Just presented.
Uh, yes, sir. It's, I think it's.
Member Little, we'll, uh, ask you to do number seven there.
To the race of possible action resolution number R 2020 dash one four seven. So move.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a, uh, final resolution on the city participating in a Texas Water Development Board flood mitigation program. Uh, these are for repetitive loss properties and this is for actually raising them up. Uh, and this is at the owner's behest and agreement. Um, and so this is, uh, one of the means, uh, that, that can be used to address these repetitive loss, uh, properties. Um, and it is, uh, all TWDB money, uh, in this. Uh, we are the administrators of it and progressants. So it's a hundred to one outside value.
Awesome. All right, that's staff report. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
I'll vote aye to the lucky FEMA club.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one four seven.
All right, Member Owens, take up new business item number eight, please.
All righty, consideration possible action resolution number R 2021 dash one one six. That's a move.
I get.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, we'd presented this, uh, you'll recall, two weeks ago. Uh, this is for our new Shadow Creek Library and, uh, furniture fixtures, uh, equipment inside of that. Uh, and, uh, council raised some questions. Uh, we did review those, uh, stripped out the, uh, refuse cans, uh, but then provides some information about the, uh, other materials that are in the, other facilities that are in there and hope we've answered any questions. Haven't heard anything. So, uh, back for your consideration.
All right, staff. Thank you. The staff report in for council, questions, comments, concerns.
Thanks for pulling out the expensive trashcans and, uh, I believe the, what, the conference room chairs. How, I guess, was there any other, uh, scrutiny on the other line items?
Do we have anything from the Roberts? Anything else we looked at?
Yeah.
Councilman Carbone, we did go through those. Um, again, uh, working with, um, our architect and our furniture company that's online to make sure that we maintain a good quality, longevity, long life, a good return on investment associated with that, with the heavy use. Um, we did scrutinize some more. Uh, that's why the price is less than what we brought before. Um, but we did also maintain and keep the quality.
All right. And how are we gonna, are the chairs still in there? Just a different quality? Or is the, the $36,000 reduction just you remove the chairs?
Self off. There we go. Um, what I'll do is, um, actually have our representative, um, from PGL. They went through that again afterwards, along with our library group, uh, to shrink down or reduce what we could reduce and where, um, to those items that you talked about, but then looking overall and, and, uh, he'll be able to answer a few more questions.
Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. If you just name an address for the record, please. Thank you.
Yes, Jeff Bulla, Principal with PGL. Um, to directly answer your question, I think that the city's staff, as well as our team and the furniture vendor have scrutinized every line item to try to bring the best value. The cost per square foot, uh, for the furniture is $28 per square foot. We are currently recommend that libraries, we do a lot of libraries, carry $35 per square foot. And this is very comparable to the Round Rock Library, City of Plano Library, Dripping Springs Library, a number of other libraries we're currently doing. As a matter of fact, I'd say their budgets are a little bit more robust than, than this. But we specifically did change out the, uh, conference room chairs to still a nice quality chair, but, but not quite to the. to the expense that was in there, that it was, the concern was raised. Um, so I think, you know, we feel very confident that you've got a great value here, and with every single item, uh, they're all durable, long-lasting, they have, the tables have power integrated in, which is typical for libraries today. They all have furniture, any of the upholstery is high-grade for, uh, upholstery that has incredible abrasion resistance. It's, it's meant not to be replaced in five years, right, it's, it's a long-term investment. And speaking of investment, it's my understanding that this is a hundred to one, uh, outside source, right, it's all one hundred percent tiers, uh, finance, right?
Correct. All right, any, uh, questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got, I, I just want some clarification. I really don't know what a nesting chair is, we're buying a herd of them.
Yeah.
And a, and a, a nesting lounge chair, nine of them, it's seventeen thousand dollars.
Uh, nesting chairs, um, are chairs just like, uh, you have chairs that stack, and then there's chairs that kind of nest together so they can be stored together, they're meant to kind of almost spoon together, uh, for storage.
Okay, I have no idea what that is, nesting. They're nesting, is that, is that what it is?
Like a Russian nesting doll, but they.
Yeah, yeah, and, and bar stools at, uh, a thousand and something dollars a piece for bar stool. Eight of them is eighty-six hundred.
I think those are in the multipurpose rooms, that way that you can move them via dollys over into their storage closets, if you wish to use the room for voting, um, or whatever purposes you wish to use it for, it's all about flexibility and ease for staff to, to move those chairs and tables.
I, I appreciate having looked at this again and going back through with the fine-tooth comb, um, I, I think we have to do that as stewards of taxpayer money, absolutely. Our next agenda item is fifty million dollars, um, and before this, we were talking about seventy-one percent of our entire budget, so I just think we, we might want to, uh, act accordingly, but thank you for the additional review, appreciate that.
I, I agree with Number Orlando, um, but also there, there's a stewardship piece, um, this is gonna be like, um, centerpiece for the city, at least sometime, uh, I'm very excited about it. The question I have is, all of the items for the FF and E, if we need to replace those items, are these one of the kind, are they custom, where can we? As somebody who has worked with contractors, the guy for me who puts it in is the guy who maintains it, who will be the person that maintains this afterward?
May I have your permission to invite, uh, Michael Taylor to join you here? Michael's with, uh, Library and Interiors of Texas, and he can probably better address exactly how that is. Some of it is custom, um, but other things are just, uh, you know, line items.
Along the same lines, what kind of warranty are we getting with this?
Hey there, it's Michael Taylor with Library and Interiors of Texas, and what was your question, sir?
Yes, um, what kind of warranties come with this furniture?
They all range from a five-year warranty to a lifetime warranty, but I will say that if anything goes wrong with any of these furnishing items, you can rest assured, you can call us and we'll make it right, even if.
Nothing less than five years.
Nothing less than five years, no, sir, thank you.
I think the, one of the other questions was like, how much of this is like a one-of-a-kind type thing versus a chair breaks, we're now down, or five chairs break over time, I mean, can we get these replaced?
Absolutely, yeah, the majority of them are made to order specifically for your facility, uh, but they are not custom items, it's just the finishes that are somewhat custom for your building, so the metal finish, the wood finish, the upholstery, but, um, we'll be able to replenish anything that does break down, but as you mentioned, the, the quality benchmark is that it does not break down, but if it does, we're here to call and replace it for you.
That's just a key item, I, I, I was very impressed with the team on the design when we went through there, I think we're all very excited, and, and you don't wanna have, it's a, you know, it's like, you just don't wanna miss on the interior after you've done so much effort on the architecture, uh, and I'm just, I'm very concerned that this is gonna get a lot of use, we're gonna have a lot of kids be there after school, they're gonna be there on the weekends, their families, um, and that, there will be wear and tear, um, but it sounds like we were conscious of that, and that's important that we have the ability to replace as needed. Um, I'm very aware, just for the team's benefit, and, and trying to speak well, the budget for furniture and technology is two point one, almost two point two million, and we're at one point one, um, even with the, uh, the value exercise, and so we're still gonna be spending dollars to bring this thing to life, so I'm, I'm appreciative of the team, you know, sharpening the pencil, I just wanna make sure we're doing something that we're gonna be proud of being in front of, um, and that it will look and feel representative of what we want it to be.
Are we good on warranty stuff, or are we gonna, I, I think, I'm just, I think, and I mentioned this maybe last meeting, but I think maybe an underused, uh, parliamentary tactic that we have is the call to question, and I, I think I'm at some point gonna start getting feistier about employing that, but thanks for the discussion, everyone.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote?
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
The motion carries three to two, to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty one dash one one six.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, um, Mr. Orlando, number nine, please.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty one dash one four two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, we're into staff report.
Um, Matt Council, um, uh, this is a major award for, uh, the John Hargrove Environmental Center, uh, wastewater treatment plant, obviously, uh, major upgrades and expansion there. Uh, council has seen this item, and so this is, uh, you know, the, uh, later step, uh, but just, uh, given this importance and the scale of this, I did ask, uh, Mr. Upton, uh, provide a little background, a few slides, and so if you will entertain, I'll ask him to refresh and share, uh, this project again, where we're at.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, visit, visit with you all and, uh, give a quick update, um, with regards to our John Hargrove Environmental Center and our water reclamation facility expansion. So with that, just to give a little bit of background, currently the plant's about four million gallons, um, existing flows are, are above those regulatory requirements, so a couple, several years ago, we were at seventy-five percent, which requires design, but then anytime during that period when you hit three months of ninety percent flow, you're required to start in construction, uh, we met that, it doesn't matter in the timeframe, as long as it, as it happened in a three consecutive month period, then the regulations kick in. Uh, this expansion is for a two-million gallon expansion, uh, to add, uh, add that capacity, uh, we've selected that construction through the construction manager at-risk project process, that alternative delivery for our, uh, Texas Government Code twenty-two sixty-nine, Pepper Lawson, our PLW was, uh, provided that, uh, opportunity. Uh, we did pre-construction awarded services in January of twenty, February of twenty twenty-one, we did an early works packages, and I wanna say thank you very much for doing that, Council, because we were able to get that equipment and that material, uh, piping in before we've had massive increases, so those contracts were signed at when we had lower prices than they are today, so they're honoring those prices that, uh, you all approved back in February. So with that, uh, timeframe, uh, PLW went through, did their, uh, balance of plant contracts, uh, put them on the street, awarded, that's come out now to finish the project at forty-nine point seven seven one and some more change, uh, as stated in the AR. Uh, this includes a new headworks facility, which includes, uh, screens and grit removal, uh, rehab of the affluent lift station, new pumps and piping associated there, uh, infrastructure, uh, that's underground in preparation for any future expansion, uh, and have those sizes in the ground, or those, uh, spurs, as I say, or, um, connections to be able to build the, the expansion in the future. Currently, we're adding two one-million gallon basins to get up to six MGD, blowers, electrical, and operations bill. Attached, you'll see, is the fiscal twenty-one year CIP adopted budget. Our construction schedule that we have set forth, as agreed to, is about eight-hundred-and-twenty days to substantial completion, with a ninety-day punch list, receive final completion. So currently, right now, our schedule is to have July one, twenty twenty-one, to be our notice to proceed, uh, that ties in with, uh, June thirtieth as being the time of completion for the early works package number one, which is securing all contracts and material, uh, picking up from there, and then substantial completion will be December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Just decided to provide a little bit of an overview of where our, our plant is located, it's off of Magnolia and Harky, uh, you'll see that, uh, in the center there is the plant with the discharge, uh, ponds, and then discharging out to, uh, Mary's Creek. With that, that's my brief presentation for today to talk about, uh, what's, what's before you.
If I could, Mayor, just a couple of other points, um, there is another item after this that's, um, intimately related, and that is for the, uh, testing, so just wanna make you aware as of that, uh, and, uh, had another point, but it's gone.
Yeah, next item is materials testing for this contract, so, two separate contracts, but it'll be, it'll be right behind it, uh, so moving to, uh, council for questions, comments, concerns?
I know this, past, past Saturday, we had that CIP, started before, um, how, how does, you know, what we're discussing there in terms of Longwood and Berry Rose flows, uh, if there's any, any, uh, adjustments to that, does that affect this, this expansion in any way?
No, I think, um, this expansion, this expansion was triggered by the hitting that ninety percent capacity, so we've gotta make this expansion. If we were to make any different changes in, in the overall plan, um, we could look at the impacts at that point, but it really doesn't impact the, the, and, and since this also includes planning for potential future expansion, it's got that planned into, into the plant itself.
Okay, and then the discussion was, I think we had a little discussion around membrane, this is not the membrane-type plant.
This continues with this current, um, technology, which is sequential batch reactor, SBR.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Repson, was this the item that, I wanna say in January or February, they were moving the, the pricing from sixty-four million up to sixty-eight, and then we got the loan, uh, in place with the TWDB? Am I, am I getting my, my projects correct?
Yeah, this is the project where I believe we had seventy-five million dollars as part of our TWDB loan.
And then we had started with the scope at sixty-four, this might have been starting a year or two ago, and then it went up to sixty-eight, which I think is where we are now, is that, I just wanna make sure I'm getting my, my projects correct.
That, that's correct, that's the project.
Um, I'm, I'm going to be a no on this, it's going to pass anyway, I didn't get a very, I never got an answer of why that moved, that was very sufficient compared to the memorandums, uh, that were previously provided, so I'm just telling you where I'm gonna be, uh, but we need to do this, I just, when we, when we make these moves, the TWDB money is very easy money to get, and, and so it just feels like we're adding to add, and I just, as a steward piece, um, I have to think about that.
Well, then what, I mean, what's the, change it? If you say we have to pass it, but you can't support it in its current form, then change it to where you can support it.
I mean, they, they are, they're gonna tell me, well, we've already gone so far, and we've done this and this, and I just.
It can't just be making other people take the tough vote, though, we, we have ninety percent of, we, we have to pass it because the state is requiring us to, and we can't sewage back up in people's homes, so if you have a change to make it more palatable, I'm all about it.
The issue, Member Orlando, is this, we say why we're going from sixty-four to sixty-eight, and we don't get a sufficient answer, it's really hard for me to get behind it, and the reality of the situation is the TWDB, for a city of our size, will give us just about anything we want, we just have to go apply. So there's not, there's not a guardrail to say, well, do we really need to spend this?
I'm getting tired, so I'll, I'll let you off there, thanks.
How close were we getting to on the, uh, was it seventy-five percent on capacity?
We've already exceeded the ninety percent for the three months requiring construction, so we're well beyond the seventy-five percent.
And when we do this and do the increase, what's that gonna drop us down to?
Well, Councilman, um, Owens.
Do the math real quick.
Do the math real quick, we'll probably be in.
Just wanna make sure we're getting our seventy million bang for the buck.
We'll be in that sixty, we'll, we'll probably be in the flows in that sixty percent range.
Be what?
The sit, around the sixty percent range. I guess I gotta redo my math, but that's, we're, we're shooting to be below what is required, so we don't have to expand again.
Well, you're adding, you have four, you're adding two, so you're adding a fifty percent capacity, the seventy-five percent, or ninety percent capacity already, so do that math, you're gonna be closer to fifty, fifty-five percent.
Sure, I thi, I think what's more important is when we use our wastewater model to look at what size of expansion we should make at this point, um, you know, this gets us a minimum of ten years out before we would ever have to look at any other expansion, um, you know, that was reevaluated at the point where the annexation laws changed, and so we drew the expansion back into just the city limits. So, you know, there are things that could change that down the road, but the plan is, is based on our wastewater model, this, you know, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be close to having a plan for any future expansions for a minimum of ten years, and then there's, you know, the opportunity with building some of the things into this project of being able to make that expansion, um, fairly simple.
Yeah, what I was getting at too, on that, you know, it, where were we at, and is, are we being forced to do the expansion now, or should we put it off a year or two, like you say, we, we can't go out.
Yes.
Anymore, we're not building a hell of a lot.
We've already hit those thresholds, yes, sir.
We, we need to do this now, and we've already bought some of the equipment, and this is the, the final.
Yeah, I mean, we're too far along to stop it, but in, in the, uh, interim on here, was that something we should have took a look at and seen of the limitations that we've got in the plant and, and the capacity going into the plant? Is that something we should have looked at, maybe delayed it a little while? Or we'll do it on, on another one that's coming up?
Council, knowing, I'm, I'm trying to understand limitations on what, sir, I, I didn't quite follow the, the question.
No, if we're not at capacity on it, and we know what the limitations are, that we're not building out anymore that much, or, or we're not coming in with, uh, additional annexation, we're not able to do that, and so what are we looking at is causing us to increase the capacity on it now?
So I think the key thing is, we have reached the capacity of the plant in accordance with TCEQ requirements, so we have hit that capacity, that ninety percent for three months. So we have to build the expansion.
So, I know we talked about this being a requirement, to, you, you know, giving us a requirement to, to boost it up, but I didn't know how far away from that, I thought it was seventy-five percent capacity, and then you had, you had to do the increase to it.
So seventy-five percent is the trigger, when you hit that trigger, you have to start the planning efforts for your expansion, which is your design work, and then when your plant hits the ninety percent trigger, you have to start construction.
And if I understand, we've blown past both the seventy-five and the ninety percent, so we really need to get this done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, and, and the other components that you were talking about, annexation and everything else, was the total, you know, what, what do we ultimately do with this plant? We had it, we had it planned at a certain capacity, now that, because of the annexation laws, we, we build that back some, that's what we're talking about there. The bottom line is, we're going from four to two, and I believe we have an additional two that we can deploy here at this, at this particular plant, probably more over time if we needed it, but we know, I think we're, I think we're, uh, licensed, we're, um, permitted up to eight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, trying to overstep you on that one, but yes, it's, it's two with the ability to do another two.
Right.
To, eight to ten years down, but we also have development to the south that ties to this, which is open land, and being.
If annexation laws change and all that other stuff changes, and we can come back, we have room here to expand if we need to, I think that's what it is, so, we were under, we were underdesigned at seventy-five percent, we're now under construction, and we're at ninety plus, so we're, we're actually doing it the way it's supposed to be done, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm just saying, this agenda ties into the next one, unless we have any discussion on that, or can we vote on those back to back?
We, we can't, the bottom line is, the other one's a material testing, if you approve nine, ten is just simply approving the materials testing, uh, for the work, if I understand it correctly.
That's correct.
Yeah, and because they're separate resolutions, we need to vote on them separately, but they, they are tied together. Member Carbone, you.
Real quick, so in this resolution, there's a, there's a reappropriation of the four-point-nine million from Fund Five Fifty, what, what is that Fund Five Fifty?
So, uh, Councilman Carbone, that, that's our enterprise fund, uh, one of the things are, is that, uh, we had requested the additional funding due to the cost increase, of course, would be at mid-year, um, however, um, we haven't got to that mid-year portion of that, if we continue to wait more with. If we continue to wait more with the cost increases that are out there on the market, we're asking for that to be accelerated. And so that's what that appropriation is for.
So, so 550, that's the enterprise fund, just the, the unbalanced, so essentially cash on hand is, that's how we're going to close the gap.
We're closing the gap and it'll be, it'll be reimbursed through the revenue bonds and the cash, et cetera. It's multiple.
We're advancing it.
Thank you.
You know, the questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Chair or Madam Secretary, will you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 142.
Member Cam Carr, would you present 10, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action resolution R 2021 dash 141. So moved.
We have a motion and a second staff report.
It's an answer.
Kind of covered it in the previous.
You, you said it, yes.
It's simply the materials testing for that contract. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 141.
Councilmember Little, would you present 11, please?
Consideration impossible action resolution number R 2021 dash 70, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a engineering design contract for a variety of intersection works that are noted in the background memo, and I thought that did a nice job of explaining for background the importance of why it's worthwhile to look at intersections as a safety consideration and that things can be done to mitigate hazards and, and cause a safer environment for both pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists. So this is a, a project that we've identified. It is TERS funded, so that's another positive and CEO fronted. The intersections are there on page seven of 66 that I have and shows you where those conflicts have been in those major intersections. So considerable design effort to go back and retrofit these and recognize traffic patterns of today. And so this contract with traffic engineers will get us going on this. Nothing to add.
Any questions, comments from council?
I got a question. Anybody here from, uh? Firm?
Traffic engineers? They online?
Nobody here from traffic engineers, eh? You know?
They're online, sir. They're attending the meeting virtually. Yes, sir.
Who's online?
We get them brought up.
Just give me the name and I can unmute them. Okay. Riley Eves, you're unmuted.
Come here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, and you're who?
Uh, I am.
You're not, you're not Dan Lynch, are you?
No, I'm not Dan Lynch. I am Riley Eves.
No, no, I mean, that's okay. I was just going to rip Dan a little bit. Okay, yeah, and I, you know, a lot of Trent, on some of these contracts we get going out, I would appreciate, you know, for an individual to represent the company to be online or be here in the audience, one of the two things on there. I think it's, it's good. I know if we have questions, we'd, we'd like to hear it coming out of the either the contractor or the engineering firm. And I know that probably staff could answer, but our contracts, not with staff, it's with the engineering firm on there.
Yes, sir. I believe our protocols are for new contracts and, and engineering contracts and many of our other contracts that they all either attend in person or virtually.
I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Since traffic engineers is, is online, I'm, I'm glad to see Business Center Drive at Memorial Hermann Drive is, is on here. It's a very busy intersection. When they're looking at this intersection, are they also going to be looking from Broadway to that intersection as well? It's a very dangerous stretch of road, and I think a lot of it is dangerous, quite frankly, because of all the landscaping. You can't see, I mean, you've got curvature of the road, which, which causes you can't see. If, because of the landscaping, you can't see around the curves.
It's the most dangerous.
Yes, sir.
And I can't drive, I don't drive that intentionally.
Yeah, it, it, it's dangerous and I, and unfortunately, I, I don't, you know, not going to speak to the old, you know, the way it was designed and everything else, but hopefully they're looking at the whole stretch and recommending maybe zero scape and some other stuff as far as landscaping is concerned.
Yes, sir. So we did a study on that several years ago and it looked at, you know, making some modifications to the, to the access there to help with some of the conflict points. And that'll be looked at as part of this and, and we'll also take a look at site distances and things along with that and see, you know, how we can help that with as far as what the landscaping is today.
Well, that's, that's good. Like I said, that, I, it's just a dangerous, dangerous.
Yes, sir.
It's a small stretch and it's, it's pretty dangerous. So I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments?
Really briefly, on the drainage impact analysis that they're quoting in the scope, is that literally for the improvements? They're only looking at the analysis of the sheet flow? How, how is, it's not like a full tilt analysis, but what is like the scope in terms of what they're evaluating on the drainage piece?
I'm sorry, I apologize, on the drainage component?
It's quoted on page. Page one of seven on the Gage document under attachment A, scope of services. They have a drainage analysis that they're, they're quoting in here. I, I'm just trying to understand, what is that scope relative to these improvements?
If you're, okay, if you're under our standard, standard contract for professional services, so that's our standard contract that we utilize for all of our contracts. So it may have some, have some over there. We don't modify all these, so it's, it's specific. That's why we attach the scope of their services to it. This is our standard construction, our standard engineering design contract. On the Gage, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's on the Gage proposal, so I was just clarifying that for Robert. It, it looks like what it's talking about is looking at the inlets and the drainage areas as, as we make the modifications, just to ensure that those all drain as we add turn lanes, modify the inlets and modify the, the roadway.
I'm sorry, I went to the proposal contract. Apologize, sir.
Thank you for telling me I'm not crazy. The only thing I would add in, in the, the intersections are all very good, but Kingsley at Broadway, which is on the south end of, of Shaw Creek Ranch, I think is just as busy, if not isier than some of those other areas. So that would be the only thing I would always say I would love to see in there, but you guys are already far down the path on that.
I, I couldn't hear what you said you'd like to see there.
Kingsley at Broadway, you have, you have, you have all the major intersections on 2234.
Right.
And then Kingsley is the bottom of one of those. So that would just go in along with some of the ones that are closer, like Business Center on the southern part.
Yes, sir.
So, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Little? Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 70.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, matters removed from consent agenda. I believe we had item D as in David. And we need to go back to that. Member Owens, would you present item D? No, on consent agenda.
Which one was it? I'll shut my computer down. Yeah, on the consent agenda, consideration possible action resolution number R 2021 dash 130, so move.
We have a motion and a second staff report.
Mayor Council, we're looking to be into our new Orange Street service station that'll house engineering, public works and related infrastructure functions. Building's set to open this fall. This for the furniture fixtures portion of that work off of luck, using that off the, I believe, by board and for the items that you see enumerated there. Happy to answer any questions.
Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I pulled it, again, we've got lounge chairs in here at $1,300 each. I didn't see any $40 trash cans this time. We've got four by eight whiteboards for over $1,000 each, nine of them. I don't know, I, I struggle with the, the pricing on this furniture. And then I guess a more specific question, so off the byboard, you know, I, I can understand the, the furniture piece, then at the bottom we've got kind of receive, deliver and install, and then kind of a move. How, how, how do we get that type of service off a byboard and know that we're getting a competitive price?
I'll do my best to answer that question, Councilman Carbone, but it is part of services that are, that can be rendered through the byboard on their contract and vetted through purchasing to make sure that we are in compliance with the byboard. They do offer services such as that besides furniture, but also installation, relocating, we're moving from Hill House and all the furniture there over to any furniture that's left over over to the new facility too as well. So, yes, so it is part of and been vetted through purchasing to make sure that it is in compliance with what's on the byboard.
Okay.
I did check four by eight whiteboards just because I noticed that myself and checked Office Depot and they were actually more expensive than these.
I'll send you some links I saw.
What is the budget for this item? Just for clarity, at least I knew in the other one for the library that the budget was 2.1 million combined. Was there a budget on this, just going down the furniture road?
FFNE budget is total of $800,000. I'll read this correct.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So that includes the technology package as well.
Any other questions, comments? Member Orlando?
Yeah, I, I would only say I am grateful and have no complaints about any of my fellow members reading the, reading the packets and thoroughly and, and being attentive to detail. I guess I would just ask the staff, is there a, a way that we could communicate this to you in a way that we can resolve some of these like in advance? Like I, I understand there's, there's utility towards putting a spotlight on wasteful spending, but also just in the interest of getting some of these things kind of taken care of and maybe looked at and addressed in advance.
I mean, I would pull it either way and vote no. Sorry for the talk and why don't we just vote?
All right, that's, so we, we don't put any furnishings in there, then what do we do? Clay or, or anyone else? If we, if we vote no and there's no furnishings, will y'all just make do and stand at stuff?
We'd probably, I don't know what we do.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I don't want to be the guy who always has to, you know, stand up and do the, the thing that we all know we have to do. So I, I think I might, what, just let y'all stand.
I think the thought experiment would be cool.
We, we still got needing to go, so with that, Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
The motion carries three to two to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 130.
Can I reconsider my vote?
Do you want to? Bring the whole item back?
Halfway, halfway I do.
Revote it.
Okay, let's revote it.
How do we?
Let's run it back. Motion to, did someone who was on the winning side of that have to?
Somebody on the winning side to have a motion to reconsider. It will be somebody who was on the prevailing side of that vote.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider that vote. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, my, my comments are, we, we play a lot of games up here. Let's play them.
Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Little? Member Owens?
Why should I change anything? No.
The motion fails five to zero.
All right, so let's move forward in our agenda. Item number, gosh, can't even read that, 14, other business, there are none. Mayor Council issues for city council discussion. Item one, we're going to move to a future agenda in July. Person bringing it forward is not here tonight and asked to have that moved to a future agenda. With that, we'll move to executive session under Texas government code. We will have two items, one, section 551.071, consultation with a city attorney and 551.087, economic development negotiations. Move into executive session at 10:10. Move into executive session at 10:10.
Russell is returning from executive session at 11:14 PM. I believe we are taking no action on items discussed in executive session at this time. Is that it? All right, so we can adjourn this adjourn this meeting at 11:14 PM.